We called this meeting tonight hoping that we can answer some questions from people around town. There's been a lot of questions about why do we get so much water, where did it come from, was there anything that could be done to prevent it, those kind of questions that popped up. We have staff here this evening. We have our city engineer Ted Martin, our public works director Eric Patterson, our road superintendent Rodney Jacobs, our building official Chris Arthur, our fire chief Eric Meyer, and then our city administrator Adam Welch who will be conducting the meeting this evening. We also have some elected officials with us tonight. We have Alden Matt Turner, Alden Judy Greath, and Alden Judy Bowman, Alden Dickerson, and I saw Alden walking somewhere back there. We're meeting in this evening, so I want to thank them for coming.
Do you have a couple more, Jerry?
Anyway, let's try to keep this moving along. We're going to try to keep it to an hour on questions, but if we need to go over, we will. There will be staff at the end to answer questions individually. Matt, did you have...
The woman wants to speak. She's asking you to sign your name and address, so she'll have it.
Yeah, if you plan to get up and ask questions or speak, I mean if you change your mind somewhere along the line, just make sure you get your name on the sheet and we'll get you signed up. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Welch and get started.
So that we wanted to keep this group kind of close because if we don't need to use the microphone, we don't want you. We want everybody to be able to hear what everybody's saying, but I'm not sure if that's going to work with this crowd in here. I'm sorry that you all hadn't come out tonight for this. I wish this had not happened, but thank you for attending this as we try to answer some questions or at least get some information. Don't know if I'll have all the answers, any of the answers tonight. What we're going to try to do is gather information and then use that so that we can look at what we need to do. What does this city need to do to do things better in the future, to help you at what we can, and to look at what we need to do to repair certain areas of the city? That's why we brought staff, because I am not the expert in all these areas. I oversee what the city does, watch the budget, organize, talk to my department heads, try to keep things going. And that's kind of what my job is tonight, same thing, overseeing this, keep things going. We've got a handout that kind of describes how we're going to do this. What I hoped is if we have enough quick questions that we could do this maybe in an hour, hour and a half with some questions, and then the rest of the time you can talk to staff. But we may have too many people here for which to do that. But there may be some individual questions. Maybe you don't want to get up in front of the group and ask a question. That's why I wanted staff here, so that you can ask something individual. But what we'll do is when we'll take questions, we will get directed to who I think may be able to answer it. And then if not, we can take notes. That's what Cheryl Stanley is doing. She is our deputy city clerk, and she's taking notes. If there's something that we need to look into, she will make note of that, we will look into it, and we'll get back to you. That's why we've got that sheet that's being passed around, the notepad. We wanted people to put names and addresses, and then later, if you asked a question and you want us to get back to you, please give us an email address or a phone number or something so that we can get back to you and let you know what we found out. So we're all aware of the last two rains that we have had, but what you may not have thought about is that there were four significant rains this summer. And you're probably wondering when those rains occurred. So the major rains were July 27th and August 22nd. You know about those. We also had rains on April 30th and May 2nd that totaled four inches, but that rain lasted two days. So there wasn't that significant amount of rain that we had those other two days. And then we had another four inch rain. It was early August, but again, it occurred over a 24-hour period. The rain on July 27th occurred in three hours. The rain on August 22nd occurred in five hours. And that's where we're having our issues is because of the amount of rain that fell in the short amount of time that it did. What we're seeing is storms that develop over areas and they don't move. They just keep going and going and going. You've seen this with Houston. The hurricane moved in, just sat there. It's hardly moving. It's now finally going to move up and go to the east and go along the southern coast. But it's been sitting over Houston for so long, they've gotten 50 inches of rain. And also keep in mind, that's going to impact what happens for us because there's a lot of focus on those floods and not our flood. So we have through with our staff, our building department has been out talking to a lot of homeowners, gathering information. We have collected that, sent it to the state emergency management agency. They will be collecting the data from all of Cass County and Jackson County, and then they will let us know what else we need to do next. Because if we're looking for any type of federal assistance, we have to go through state emergency management, and then they go through the numbers, and if they believe, or if they hit a certain amount, which they'll then want us to come back, probably talk to you all again, and get damage assessments, and then after the damage assessments, it goes back to SEMA. They may come down and do their own damage assessments. After they do that, they will collect it, give it to the governor, and if they think it's at the number that they need, which is what we understand about eight million, the governor can then declare a disaster for this area, and then if, then they will submit it to the president, and then he can, he can say there's a disaster, a federal disaster. Then it opens us up for federal funds. The city's looking at it for ourselves because, as you all know, you've seen it on the news, we had an issue with the spillway over at Lake Luna, and we would love to get that fixed permanently. At this point, we're just going to be doing a temporary fix, and then trying to get it to last as long as we can, and that's going to be maybe a year before we get something else in there. Don't hold me to that, but that's what we're trying to do. We need funding, public assistance, as much as the public does, and that's disaster assistance. There is a difference. There are two different types of assistance that the federal government, that they do. It's not the same. If you see that they are giving public assistance, that doesn't mean the public. It means it's for the county and city governments. So just be aware of that as we keep going through this process.
I know.
I think you've also been, you've seen the Red Cross leaving here helping. We've got a list of information, people to call. We've got it up here up front if you need to contact different agencies. We've got a list up here. We are in contact with them constantly. We're just hoping that the numbers come back and we can find some federal assistance to help everybody. Outside of that, I'm going to open it up and let you all ask us questions because that's why you're here. So what I want to do is I want to use this microphone instead of you having to get up, walk across everybody. I'm going to act like Phil Donahue and hand around the microphone. So those of you like Matt Turner, please do not trip me. I would appreciate that. That would be a workers' comp claim and then I've got all sorts of paperwork to fill. So who would like to start off tonight with a question?
Well...
First thing to go on.
So my name is Tammy Caldwell, and we live on Walker Drive. And one of my questions is, is last week when we actually saw the mayor, I'm not sure where he was, right there, we asked if you contacted Vicky Harzler or the governor. And last time I talked to you, it was on Wednesday, you had played the phone tag with Vicky Harzler. Obviously, we're a week into this, and he had not heard anything. So I guess my first question would be is, have you heard from them on that? And if so, what was their response?
Yeah, I actually did speak with Vicky Harzler. He has a case, he calls. He was supposed to be here this evening. He called me, he got hung up in Columbia. They probably don't get balls to reach $18,000 statewide, which is what you have to give for FEMA to kick in. So far, they have not seen that number tick up to 8, which would be not just us, but Kansas City, any of this surrounding area. But we did make sure it's on their radar. We did contact the governor's office. Did talk to Representative Fauch last night. She was supposed to be here. I hope she should made it this evening. But again, it's on both the state and federal radar. If you got it, it's just like, they all work off the numbers, it's the damage numbers. We had, we got, we had damage numbers, we wanted to know what our total is, we got to get that turned in. So that's the key on the important factor, making sure to support all the damage we can add to that total. They are aware that if it does give them that, there's a lot of space to speak on our path.
So who's responsible then for giving them that data as far as numbers? Because I mean, no one's come to my house and said, how much damage did you think? We haven't even been asked to give estimates. I mean, we're, again, our insurance doesn't pay for any of this. I mean, we're collecting receipts, but I mean, how do they come up with those numbers? I mean, they give the businesses. I mean, there's at least 17 businesses that were hit this second time, this flood from last week, along with prior to that, you know, the three weeks prior to that. So who's coming up with these numbers?
So SEMA has not asked us yet to collect that number. They've asked us to tell them who's damaged, whether it's minor, moderate, or major. So we've submitted those numbers.
So that's what the Red Cross did. So is SEMA and Red Cross working together or are they separate?
That I don't know. All I know is that we've submitted, along with the county. So we submit to the county and to the state that information to say, here's the damage amounts. These are, this is the amount that we've had damaged. When I say amount, I mean the number of homes. 25 homes, 30 homes, 17 businesses. This is what we've had. Now we wait for them to say, alright, you need to collect this next. And it would be estimates on what the damage is. And then they would take that back. They may come back themselves and get an estimate on the damage.
Yeah, but so if that's the case, I mean, some of us are already starting work now because we have to. I mean, when you have sewage water in your home, you can't wait for SEMA to come in two months from now to give us that total. So if we're doing this work now, and I guess I'm, I don't understand where these numbers are coming into play because we're still, we have to repair now. We can't wait for them.
That's the process. We're following what the process is.
So how come this process wasn't started last week or three weeks ago? What date was they contacted?
They knew about it that Tuesday morning when it happened.
So Tuesday...
The first or the second flood?
Second flood. Well, they knew about the first flood because we submitted for that.
So you guys, when you guys submitted to that?
We have everything on paperwork on that, yeah. Yeah. So we have to submit to the county, let them know how much was damaged. We were keeping track of that. Those were those dates.
Are they going to damage because of the people like them that have already fixed it and not screwed up again?
Only if they allow us to do that. We would be happy to include both dates if we're allowed by SEMA. They have not said that yet. They said, what did you get damaged on this date? And it's the date, the latest one.
So does the city only benefit from the city being a flood or disaster area by SEMA? Because we only benefit, correct, from SEMA?
We don't declare ourselves a disaster area. It's only if the state and federal governments...
Does, for you guys. We have you guys benefit, but that does not come back to the public, correct?
Depends on what they, what they, what they say is disaster assistance. If it's public, they call it public assistance. That means it's for the county and local governments. If they do disaster assistance, then it's for the residents. We don't have any determination of that. That's all the federal government. They're the ones that determine that. And then they're the ones that will then come in, you'll see people from FEMA come in and start setting up places for everybody to go in and talk to, and work on the loans or grants, SBA loans, whatever programs they set up.
So the first time that you guys contacted SEMA, so this would have been in, I guess, July 27th?
27.
So what, how many homes, I mean, how did you all, because from my understanding, you all weren't made aware of all the potential flooding and hailstorm from that day. You knew about the trade fair and some of the businesses, but not the homes. So how did you all give them those numbers if you didn't, because I mean, obviously, I heard conflicting information that you did know about it, but you didn't know about it. So where, where did you guys get those numbers as far as giving them that information to SEMA the first time?
So the folks that called us in, called in, let us know that they had sewer backups or they had flooding. And we did a survey along Walker on what, what we saw on the way of damage, because usually you're going to see somebody with a dumpster out front that's doing work. So we then went through that area and found the damage, and then for the businesses, it also contacted us.
So not everyone's going to have dumpsters. I mean, because those dumpsters, like today, I don't have a dumpster in front of my house. So if someone were to come in front of my house today, they don't know that I lost everything on my bottom floor. So how long does it take for you all to assess that then? I mean, are you guys going out the day that it's calling your county dump? Because dumpsters don't get delivered the next day. Sometimes it takes a day, you only have them for seven days.
You definitely just respond to every email and stuff that is sent to the city and to the mayor, because I know of three people, including myself, even though at the first flood, that we had, as I know, three of them had dumpsters on our street, and no one ever contacted us, till we actually contacted you guys. And this was days after.
And that's how we collected the information, and then we sent it to the county.
I wasn't on Walker. I had water over my house, I had sewer backup. I was told from the city that it wasn't due to the flood range, that there's no correlation between the two. How do you know that I had damage at my house? I called the city. Is that recorded, or how do you know that?
So we would, I would have to look at what, what we've put on our list, is those that have made phone calls. Everything that came into either the public works department or the city, or to our main number, we then put on our master sheet. The thing on sewer backup is that it may not happen in that, in that one area, if it's not just on Walker. That's all across the city. So no, we didn't do a door-to-door survey of 3,000 residents that we have here. That's only, that's why we hope that people will call us and let us know what's going on. Then we come out and look and see what kind of damage.
Still, when we did it, nobody reached out. I mean, the city actually didn't reach out. So there's no, the city never come out or anything. And also, another question is, was, was anybody advised in the city not to answer questions about flooding or flooding, to the residents or anything? Was that advised by anybody in the city?
Not to my knowledge.
And an email was not sent out to anybody saying, to the ward or the public cannot answer flood questions or anything to any of us?
Can't answer that.
Who could answer that?
I couldn't really put out anything in the newspaper saying, hey, you guys got damaged, call the city and report it. Put it somewhere. Nobody knew. I own a business. My business is going to shit every day because my electric appliance is flooded because I have this much water in my damn building. And every day, I got thousands of dollars in tools, just going to shit, catching on fire, popping, smoking, all that. No one asks. I'm probably going to go under because I don't have the money to buy the stuff again. I've got customer cars that got flooded. I had to clean. I had cars that I already worked on for a whole freaking day, had to come in, do them all over again. Then on top of all that, I had to clean all the sewage out of my shop that came through the floor grates. Also on top of all that, this happened months ago, but besides it happened, or actually weeks ago, besides that happening, no one cleaned the creeks after the last flood. There was stuff in the creeks and still is backed up to this day because I walked the creeks Thursday. No one's cleaned them. I've lived here my whole freaking life. As a kid, I played in those creeks. Those creeks were as wide as these walls in some spots. Now they're probably not even as wide as those hallways. The creeks need cleaned out because the water ain't going in.
And I have pictures of that. Can I, while you're talking, can I hand these out to all the, all the ones so we number them, so we can, and to the people up here, so they'll be able to ask the questions?
I mean, it's as simple as that. The water has nowhere to go. I understand that it came quick, but who cares how slow and quick it comes if it has nowhere to go? Sutherland used to be a flood plain. When I was a kid, that was always flooded. Price Chopper was always flooded. You guys raised the dirt. Where Loves is at, the water floods down. You raised the dirt. You put concrete. Now the water has nowhere to go. It doesn't absorb in anything. It's common science. Ground absorbs. Concrete does not. It runs off. It goes downhill towards the highway where the other creek is also flowing, under the highway. It gets clogged right there. It backs up, comes through Sutherland, comes through the trade fair, comes up my creek, which is also flowing all the water down through there, and it backs it up. That street at 225, when I was there, was to my waist from the bank, and it was flooded all the way across to the outer road. It was a giant lake. It's never done that. In 2010, we had a little bit of water, a little bit after Sutherland was built, and it was like four feet away from my building. My building is the detail shop right across from Sutherland. My house is also, my ex-house was also across the street. It has a sloopy driveway. It gets water. I complained to the city in 2010 about it. They told me they would address the issue, do the flooding and all that with the irrigation. No one ever did anything. I went door-to-door through the whole neighborhood of Walker and Joy and all that. Everybody signed it. Nothing ever happened with it. Now that house with the new owners there had almost three feet of water in the garage.
Actually, they drew up plans for that. When we did that...
Yes, while you helped me do it.
They drew up plans, but they never followed through. They actually told us to make your, protect your business the best way you can. So we cleaned out the little grain from now and from his shop down to the actual grain in the back lot of our building. It's actually on our property, the grain. And so we actually made the creek so the water wouldn't go in his house anymore, or there, because it comes off the road and through our property, to the back end and through our parking lot. All that road water comes through the front of the store and behind the store. It actually washed three foot of dirt off our foundation. We have no dirt in between our two buildings because of so much pressure coming off the main road over this, and his shop.
From these last rains or from...
The last rain took it, but it was crowding, I addressed the issue with them before because it's crowding our, there's nowhere for it to go besides up against our building, and then follows behind our store and in front of our store. So it makes crevices across our property instead of going into any drainage ditch. All the road from inside their shop comes to us.
So who owns this, right here on page one?
I think the problem with something like, asking questions on this is not, everybody can see it. So I hate to say that I don't, I wouldn't have that.
Well, okay, who owns the culvert on outer road and commercial, the...
Yeah, it's a culvert.
Yeah, the culvert, right here. I mean, they don't have to see it, but just on...
I mean, I got it out there too. That was the state. When we called the state, we had to clean it out. The last flood leaked out the state after probably calling for almost a year. They did come and clean it out. The dirt that was left in it, they said the rain would wash it out. On the other side, they never cleaned it. They said, oh, it'll take care of it. I understand.
It's three feet of mud. Is there a...
They were also responsible for the other culverts at the time. Now it's not the state. They said they don't clean that out.
Is there a maintenance, is there a maintenance program set up? And you guys keep up with that?
I talked to MoDOT today. Everything from Independence to the interstate belongs to MoDOT.
Is there a maintenance?
If everybody doesn't realize that, I'm sorry, but it does. The state maintenance begins right there at Independence. I talked to MoDOT. They were clueless. They had no idea they had a problem. Because nobody's telling them, from your office, that, hey, we're flooding because your box culvert was still to the end.
There is three foot of mud, and on some of them, there is three of them lined up. On two of them, it is so grown over, that just didn't happen from a flood. That has grown. Three foot of mud. They're totally blocked, which means, and my next question is, do you know if from the park, if any of that was rerouted to hit that creek back on, I'm on Walker Drive also, was any of that rerouted back a few years ago to hit that, to where that creek also has that runoff? Because what's happening, if that was, which a business owner in town said she thought that was, so that is a question. Can you answer that? Is it ran, where does the city park, where was that rerouted to?
So that creek runs from city park down along where Lord's Park is, goes in behind Price Chopper, comes across the highway, and then connects in on the west side.
Which says, my saying is, if it is backing up because it is not being kept up in the culverts, it's just, it's now formed such a habit for Walker Street because we are taking, our street is now taking on every bit of the city's water. And because it's not being kept up, one of the reasons I feel like engineering was wrong on that, there's no way it could have been right. But anyway, we are taking all that on. It's not being kept up. Do you contact the state or whoever's responsible for them, and is there a maintenance program set up? Because I know there's not, because it's grown over into two of them, are totally blocked, and it has been years. And I know you guys have contacted, because I have been on it. I have contacted. And because I asked, who's doing this digging? Who's doing, and on the creek back there, there is something dug to when the creek rises, it flows off into a city, the city drain, the city drain. Do you like to know who dug that? Did you guys do that?
You'll have to, excuse me, but I've been here for seven months, so my knowledge of what's here is...
You guys.
I would know a question.
Well, I don't know. Do we, do we know how that was done?
You have not done anything from the creek, so when it rises, and then a grain...
So in your packet, I'm sorry. So in your packet on that, I mean, I know not everyone got packets. I'm sorry. I had no idea what turnout was going to be. But on that, the property behind that is on pages 34 and through 49, and you'll be able to see those pictures of what she's talking about.
Well, I think we need to talk about this individually so that we can look at this for you all.
Okay, well, I'd like to go back on, real quickly though. If we're getting the runoff though from the park...
I gave, I gave you the explanation. I actually gave...
This is one I can't worry about.
Oh, okay. Yes. Thank you, sorry.
So if we're getting the runoff from the city, or from the park now, on top, no, that's what you said. You said it ran behind Price Chopper, which if you follow that creek, that creek flows all the way back. It doesn't run off to the road. It follows, because I've actually walked that because we've now been flooded. So, and I'll be more than happy to walk whoever needs to walk. That path goes all the way back to Comfort Inn. That, then goes through the culvert, which is clogged. So, no, let me finish. So we've got that runoff, and then we also have the runoff from the business of Sutherland. We also have the farmland that's behind us. We have the runoff from there. And then the businesses are the homes that's up higher behind the creek. We have the runoff there. And we have Loves. So obviously, we want to bring business in, but we don't want to fix the stuff underground. And what's happened is, is that everyone knows, well, there's been a lot of speculation that we were at one time in a floodplain. They built that, they built that up. I've lived there for six years. We've had torrential dam ports. We've had flash flooding. We've had water come into our yard. I've never seen as much water. I had water coming in the front of my home because of all of the rain and the one tiny little sewage ditch that we have on our street, along with the back. And in those pictures, which again, you can't, and I'll be more than happy to share that with anybody, you can see that my backyard literally looks like a pond. I have a privacy fence, and it's over waist deep along, all the way through the creek. That is an issue. And until you guys clean out those dishes or ditches, we're going to, every single time we get a heavy torrential rain, it's going to flood. And I know that doesn't seem to be your problem because you're not going home at night and cleaning up the sewage, but I have children that live there, and even if I didn't, it's still my home. It's, that's what I've worked my hardest for. And so literally, for three weeks, we've been dealing with this. We had one, or I'm sorry, two quick visits from the mayor. You all are telling me that you have not contacted MoDOT since last week, which I asked for last week in the meeting, along with everyone in Walker can testify to that. And you all are still sitting on your asses and not doing anything. I'm sorry. That's what's frustrating, is because this is our livelihood. We are in raw sewage. It's businesses, it's homeowners, and you all have done absolutely nothing. Everything that has been, all these pictures, who owns the property, all of that was done through us today. We asked for that stuff, and for a week, we got absolutely nothing. We got on the assessor's website today, and it took literally two minutes to do it. So you're telling me that none of you, even if you have full-time jobs, you didn't have time to do that? Because I have a full-time job and three kids and can still do that. And that's not my, that shouldn't be my concern. My concern should be rebuilding my home. And I can't do that because now I have to do the city's job for that. And that's what's really frustrating, because you all seem to, oh, now we're going to wait four months for SEMA to come in. You haven't even contacted them. That's what's frustrating.
They don't live on Walker Street.
Has anybody contacted them right now, as we speak, to say, we know this is the problem? Clean it, clean out, somebody get down here and get this cleaned out? Because if it rains, has anyone been contacted, the state or whoever owns them? They have? What day?
Today, Matt Kelly.
Today. Okay, it has been almost a week. I talked to Brian, and Brian knew the day of, which he showed out because, and I truly feel like, no, I'll stay. I truly, I live on Walker Drive also, and I truly feel like he showed up because I found out they was at the dam. And I called the news crew, and I said, 41 News, can you come out? Our street is literally flooded. These homes have flooded twice. We have raw sewage and poop in our home that come up through, and I've got pictures, tubs and toilets that we have. We can't recover from that. We had just rebuilt. One family, Kate, she had put up everything, everything but her carpet. We're out there struggling. We are the ones, and Judy, I don't know, she, we found out, I'm not a political person. I didn't even know she wasn't even our board. I reached out to her and the mayor. He never contacted me back. She did. And she didn't even know I had contacted the news. It really was not until we all started contacting everyone back and saying, we got on the news, we need help. The city never reached out to none of us, even though you knew, you knew. Every one of us have it in writing that we contacted you on Facebook and everything. No one reached out to us on our street until we started to really being active for ourselves.
So kind of two kind of lob of questions, I guess. So the city engineer, I read on, thanks, page two of the newspaper that you guys just handed out, talked about how this was a possibility, these were 100-year floods. I get it. I'm not going to use the argument like, oh, it should only happen 100 years. I get it. I totally understand that it happened more often than that could. I totally understand that it happened more often than that could. If we're in a floodplain at all, if there's a possibility of it being a hundred-year flood, the easiest thing the city could have possibly done is just say, hey, this road, you guys are one of the most low-lying roads possible. We, as a city, being the least that they could possibly do is go, hey, everyone on the street, buy flood insurance. It's only three hundred dollars. It covers up to two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars of damage.
They don't even know if it.
But no, 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 no. That's, no, that's, that's, that's the thing. Is that's the very common misconception that FEMA, FEMA, well, you can offer, offers flood insurance programs, starting at only two hundred, two hundred, two thousand.
Two hundred, two dollars. I researched that.
Not a month, a year.
A year, sorry, yeah, a year.
So at, at, at no point, and then what, at, at some point, Walker Edition was, it was a floodplain up until the late.
Vernon Walker owned it.
Up until the late nineteen seventies, right?
Yes, and they raised it up.
So I clearly haven't lived there since the late nineteen seventies, but I'm smart enough to know that if something was a floodplain at one point, unless you ranged it forty feet in the air, maybe there's a possibility you can still flood. So at one point, when we go to buy a city, we've only lived in our house for two months. It's flooded twice in those two months. So with that, at any point, the city could have come to us and everyone on our street and could have just said, hey, buy flood insurance. That's not hard. That's the easiest possible thing. That's a piece of paper that says buy flood insurance. You're in a high-risk area, but we're not in a floodplain.
Yeah, some of the people were saying, oh, this house is a flood, this house is not a flood. It's not. If you're not mandated by your mortgage company to take out. And that was some of the city people. Did not even know whether some of them homes was, I mean, they were saying, yeah, this is a flood thing. This is, this house isn't a floodplain. It's not. Every other house, it's absolutely not true. Here guys is people from the city didn't even know. So that's what I find also interesting. And another thing is, every one of our properties, this guy that just bought his home three months ago, it's worth nothing. Do you think anybody is going to buy our homes? And yet the city assessor just raised all of our personal property taxes? It's worth nothing, nothing now. We can't sell our home. No one's going to buy it. Would you want to come down? Any of you guys want to come down and live in a home that you know is, it's not, it is not the fact is, if it's going to flood again, it is when it is going to flood again. And no one will buy a home. You wouldn't want to buy it. So we are all sitting on homes that are worth nothing to us now.
And when you're afraid to leave your house because they're closed out?
Thank you.
Because you know you're going to come home to a mess?
Or tampered with.
Have your furniture in your basement up on hand because you're scared to death that you're going to come back and all the stuff we've replaced from the last flood is going to be gone?
Just so you're all aware, this one's living up on Megan's.
Yeah. I live over on Megan Drive, right by Dick's funeral home, okay? And I have been driving around the neighborhood and I don't know if you guys have seen this, but if you drive up Elm Street going towards Crown Care, there are no ditches on the south side of the road. There's nowhere for the water to go.
Except our backyard.
Except for to funnel down the hill and go in between our houses, Mark's house. And it just creates a massive river.
Water in your backyard.
So here's, here's my assessment, okay? One, the ditches, I'm driving around, the ditch right next to Mary's house, still got water standing in it because the drainage system is plugged. There's nowhere for the water to go, all right? Up at Crown Care. I understand you guys put in the reservoir for the people up there to have a place to go fish, whatever. That's fine. There's also a personal reservoir owned by an individual back there. So there's actually two reservoirs back there that when we have these massive rains, they can't handle their amount of water. Okay? The storm system wasn't designed to handle reservoirs up on the hill. It was put in before they were built, okay? So now all we have is water. We're not technically at the bottom of the hill, but you've got a hill this way and a hill this way. Everything is coming down, all right? And it is flooding our backyards, all right? You've seen pictures. I've given you pictures of my backyard. I've got a four-foot picket fence and it is ponding back there to the point where I've got four feet of water in my backyard. It's getting to my house, two feet up my foundation, and then it goes right down the basement walls. And my sun pumps, I've got two sun pumps set up. They're pumping both at the same time, but they can't keep up, okay? So the city needs to come in and they need to redevelop Elm Street instead of having it sloped to the south, do something, put ditches in something to funnel the water away from our homes. Because we can't do this. I can't tell you the next time this happens, if my basement wall are going to be able to handle the pressure and not cave in and my house go kaput, okay? And I know you guys have been working with me. You've been out to the house. The engineers have come out. They've seen the landscape, all right? We've been in discussion about, you know, channeling the water and stuff. But even doing that, if you don't fix the street and how the water flows, the, the street slopes to the south and there is nothing there to catch the water, to keep it from entering all of our homes. So I don't know what else to do. I, I mean.
I understand. I know there's frustration.
You know? I feel sorry for you guys over on Walker.
So let me, let me move to this side for a second unless you all are.
I got something. We own four pieces of property that got flooded. We have a house on South Street that you guys put a big old Creek Five right there next on twenty-three oh, or three oh forty South Street, Bright Rock, Megan's, near the mountain. The whole basement is to the top of the stairs, full of water. I have no time to deal with it because I've got to deal with the trade fair and then the, obviously, the van with my building over next door, I've got a total loss over there. Plus I have a tree on Joyce, a house on Joyce Street that got water in it. But they've actually put, just because they put it in a ditch, doesn't mean it's going to help, believe me. That big old ditch is probably eight feet deep and all it does now is pour into that basement every time it rains. And now I don't have anybody living in there because I can't get the water out from the last rain and then this one again. So the, the house is molded. It's going straight to the top. I have no interest on that because it's nowhere close to being a floodplain. It's just next to, it used to be a three-foot wide little valley that ran between our houses and now it's like the big old culvert you guys put in and took half the side of the yards to put it in, which we thought would be a saving grace if something happened, but it's not happening. I've lost, I have quarter of a million dollar business, building, along with my business over by you guys. The trade fair hall is a total loss. I have mold and dripping from my ceiling now, which is non-recoverable. The insurance says they don't pay for it. I've got seventy-seven thousand dollar checks supposedly coming if they approve it. I owe three times that. I've bought, I've put so much into those businesses. That's just one of those buildings. I've lost two buildings there that are going to have to be tore down. Demolition's about eighty-nine thousand dollars. Do the math. I'm still out every bit I owe plus more just to tear them down. There's, and my house right behind there has two, a foot of water in it. Every piece of property we own and inheritable seems to be, it's an ongoing thing. I'm just saying that just because they're going to give you a creek next to you or a ditch next to you, be very wary because it, it needs, it may not work.
Our stuff.
That's, that's my scary point is, I'm surrounded by it. I've lost everything already. I've got every last penny that we've got left invested in those trade fairs to open back up. We were once, just a couple of days shy of opening when we got hit again. And now I'm rebuilding it all over again. I can't take a third one. We will lose everything, no matter what.
That is exactly true. And she's probably like us.
And flood insurance for me. We did pay flood insurance on the hall. We do pay for flood insurance on the hall. But they don't pay for metal buildings. They don't pay for anything. It's seventy-seven thousand dollars. I pay more than that in insurance on that building. And the trade fair is not a floodplain. I had four foot, four foot of water in there.
One of the guys had eight foot on our, on our street.
On our, on our building back down.
Yeah, he had eight foot of water in his basement.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So I can't speak for the city. I live here now. My house floods too. My basement always has flooding in it. We have, you know, stuff that runs down from Lexington to Independence and makes a wake in our yard that we built like Erica after my daughter. Okay, so that happens every time it rains, not just, you know, every year or whatever. So when you guys are talking about the flooding, you know, we lost stuff in our basement as well and our foundations are taking a toll from it. But I'm a hazards geologist and I've been working with geology and emergency management and natural manmade hazards for like twenty years, okay? So I know the answers to some of your guys' questions. So I feel like I can explain some things to you that maybe will help you better understand what's going on in town. So I made a couple of the, the first thing, how floods work and floodplains, okay? So every stream, river, creek, whatever you want to call it, you know, it's flowing down a pathway right now, okay? The streams don't just live in that one pathway. They'll, they'll grow, they'll meander, they'll jump over, you know, something and, and form a whole different force, okay? So the floodplain changes with the stream. Now, the floodplains, we have different years of floodplains. You know, you got two, five, ten, you know, any year floodplain that you can imagine. The mapping's top at five hundred years, okay? You're only considered to be out of the floodplain if you're outside the five hundred year line, okay? Now here's the deal. We probably experienced bigger than a hundred-year flood, okay? With the one rain on top of the other. So whenever we had that first big rain, it saturated the ground, okay? All the pore spacing, the dirt is full. Now everything's got to go onto the surface and, you know, it gains strength and things start flooding in places that maybe they never flooded before, okay? So that's how you get to extra flooding. For some of you guys, they're going, wait, 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 how come we're getting flooded now all of a sudden? That's why. So too much rain and too short of a time. If you get like, say for example, you get seven inches of rain in one day. Over the, over the, you know, just a gentle rain over the course of one day, okay? That gives the water time to kind of trickle down into the groundwater system instead of rushing across the top of the ground. Now you take those same seven inches and cram it in two to four hours, you've got a whole different story. That's flash flood city, okay?
Plus you've got all the, the Sutherland's and the loves. I mean, who, who approves the construction of those, of those, of those businesses? And who engineers the waterfall from when those, when those heavy rains come? Now that we put all this concrete in, who engineers where that water go? Because it's not going where it used to. It's now coming down Walker Street.
Okay, so as somebody that's lived in Gas County for most of her life, I can tell you that within the county, we have really old areas, okay? We have really old drainage system, wolf storms.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't be building Sutherland's.
Okay, so let me ask you this. How many of you guys in this room would be willing to pay a flood tax to rebuild the damage so that you don't have this ever again?
I think everyone.
After this experience, right? But prior to this, would you have?
Well, how much? How much would it be?
Okay, because I've seen, you know, like the fire tax, nobody passing it. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, if people told you this was a floodplain or that flood, is there change?
Absolutely. You think one person? Yeah. Okay, so with respect to knowing if you're in a floodplain or not, the first thing about that is that whenever you buy a house, you need to make sure to look at the fine print because it's supposed to tell you what your floodplain that you're in.
Okay, but let me just say this, so, but in regards to that, I mean, I understand that there's, you know, there's a lot of flooding.
Right, but listen.
I don't want this to get into a shouting match between each other. Then we're going to fall into good debate. So we're going to wrap up what you're talking about and then I'll let you guys start talking some more to get some more information on that.
I was just going to give you a very piece of information. Right. Where you can find some more flood information if you're curious now, where your house is in the floodplain? You can go to FEMA's website and you can look up the floodplain maps.
We're in the five hundred years. We're in the five hundred years. So we got the five hundred years twice.
We went to the American Conference Place meeting we all probably went yesterday. I mean, I was talking to the NFID lady, the National Flood Program, and she literally out of her mouth, I have her business card in my purse. She said, the more construction they have, the more concrete that you have, the water's not going to have anywhere to go. So she said, if you're putting in new businesses everywhere, the water has to go somewhere. You're taking away.
I can't disagree with that at all.
You're taking away our natural absorption, like so.
And I'm not trying to speak for the city because I'm not a city person.
Well, and she was from the, that's what her job is. Her job is to say.
I know.
Yeah, NFID. So she told me, okay, the more businesses you put into the small town, the more, the more parking lots you put in. I told her, I said, loves parking lot. Our water used to cool there. I mean, our, that used to be a huge lake of water when it rained. There's now a huge.
It sounds to me like remapping. The flood zones need to be remapped.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, maybe give the sewage to support that instead of dumping down on us to bring in a business crap on your, your homeowners that are on that street.
And I think it's awesome that you brought your, because without your concerns being heard, the city can't do anything about it.
So wasn't, wasn't, um, anybody?
All right, all right, that's what we're talking about.
I, I am not, Vanessa, Carver, most people in here know me, I am, I did not get flooding. Luckily, I live on hills. But the, what I'm hearing here from the citizens isn't the fact that this happened, it's the fact only, it's the fact that it happened and there not being information from the city as to where to report it. You said earlier, well, we hope you call us. Sorry, Vanessa, that's not, that should have been published on everything, every newspaper, on Facebook, on the mayor's Facebook where he's so.
You guys should have been walking the streets.
It should not be Judy, both of you, who's not even their alderman, going there and trying to find assistance. It should be me calling Sutherland's and asking for discounts and trying to put together fundraisers. It should be city officials. And that information's not flowing.
Right. And we need to have, we need to have a plan. Like you need to, the city could come to us and say, this cost, this is our plan, so this is not happening again.
Rubik's come Sunday to my house. They are a relief, a disaster relief place. And she literally told me, I don't understand why I am at a flood victim from one's house. We usually get calls from city officials. We get calls from our mayor. I am meeting with you, who is a flood victim. And I said, "Well, I've got the mayor's number, I've got the fire department's number." And she said, "This is strange to me, I've never seen this happen. It's usually the city officials that are reaching out." No one reached out to us.
They reached out to us to get building permits.
Yeah, someone walked around to tell us that we needed to get building permits and it was Judy that told them, did they wave the fee? That's to these dreams. I'm concerned about my residents. What I feel you guys have did is picked up the offense and you're here to actually get information to kind of see what we're doing, what we're thinking. I mean, this is just, I know what's happening. To protect yourself because you know that the drains was clogged, you should have did it, and that's just where I stand. Another thing, was anybody called in to see if what was coming up through our tubs and toilets was safe for us? Now, I didn't get a call from no one to see, "Let me see what was in your house to see if it's safe." Or your neighborhood, what was all, there was sewage all over our neighborhood and it stunk like crap, so I'm betting it was crap.
And there was a booth yesterday, there was a booth yesterday that said, "Don't eat out of your garden." Like we have a garden. They said, "Throw your food away, you can't eat without your garden." Like how would we have ever known that? Well, you know, like, obviously it's common sense, but after a flood, like, "Don't eat your food, you've lost that." Don't, you know, they actually gave us information that we could have been too late, you know, like it could have been, we just got this three weeks after, a month, over a month after the first flood. Like there are serious things, you have to take precaution. They were telling us, you know, bleach, everything, watch where your kids are playing, watch, you know, "This is not just floodwater, this is poop water." I mean, my kids are playing outside in the grass that has crap on it, you know? I mean, that's terrifying for me. Are my kids going to get... Go lie, he was talking to the guy yesterday at the American Red House, that he could lie to me through our whole neighborhood because it's from human beings.
Has anybody been out and checked any of that? No one, because you know now, because I sent them pictures to the city of the sewage coming up out of my tub and toilet and the street. Has anybody been out to check any of that?
We've never gone into individual homes to check that.
Have you checked the street? You knew three weeks ago that we had sewage in our street. Has anybody been out? No.
I don't know the city that does, go ahead.
So again, I guess I have a question. Like I said, my house was not underwater, I didn't get flooded, I just had sewage backup.
Which was just as bad.
The city streets go right behind my house, the city sewer main is right in front of that. Okay? So I guess my question is, if I don't have any floodwater in my house, it's all sewage backup, when does it become the city's issue?
To put them backwater valves?
Who is responsible for this? Is it me or is it the city?
The issue is that you have had such a rush of water because of a significant rain. So it is a whole city...
There's no backup.
There's no backwater valve.
I've heard about the backwater valves or the backwater valve issue.
Okay, but my question is, when I called the city and talked to them, they said there was no correlation between floodwater and my sewage. If I didn't have floodwater going through my walls, my windows, or anything, that was a separate issue. So my question is, if I have no floodwater, my foundation is dry all the way around because the sheet rocks cut up two foot around, all around. Okay? So if I'm just getting it up through my main drain, okay, is this my responsibility or is this the city's?
As far as I'm concerned, it's your responsibility and not the city's.
Well, is it code? Is it code? Is it true that it is code? If they have, if it is below, is it true?
Let me answer the question. Oh my gosh.
Is it true that if it is below, a manhole going upstream?
Hold on, hold on, nobody's hearing what you're saying.
Okay. Is it true that it is code? That if it is, if a backwater valve has to be, should have been code for, on our street, definitely, but even on kind of his, but our street was construction when this was code, that backwater valves should have been put into their homes if it is lower, the lower level of your main valve is below the main manhole that goes upstream. Every one of ours is. And my question is, because I had called on the builder numerous times whenever he was building, and now to come to find out, not one of our homes have backwater valves. I feel like the city should be responsible because I understand there's a liability went into your thing because I went up and got it. He says, "Okay, you're not responsible for human error for your code guy." My house was a second house when in. I can understand, that's human error on my house, okay? But every house in our street, that stupidity on you guys for that code guy not catching it, and I truly feel that. Amen. Amen. Go ahead.
I'm very shy and quiet, I don't have to say much. I just have a question for everybody here.
Can we draw the mark?
Who flooded in 2007? Okay, this is significant because according to the multi-hazard mitigation plan which was put out by MERC, our last significant flooding was in 2007. I have the rain totals for that, pretty identical to what we have except for the last instance, right? So what's changed between 2007 and now?
Loves and all that.
My other question is, do we have an updated stormwater energy study or engineer study? Because there was one in 2010. We also had a mitigation plan in 2015. Were those updated with these latest businesses going in? If not, why not?
Because the mitigation plan's on a five-year cycle.
When you put new businesses in, they all go...
It should be data.
And there's... She had to finish. My last thing is, it was 2:00 in the morning, my dogs were doing...
I have children in the house, I have dogs in the house, my windows have been pushed in by water. I jump on Facebook, what's going on? Kyle's the only one that's there to save me, nothing from the city. I call the city and I say, "I have water on three sides of my house. I have two children, I have three dogs, my husband's at work. What do I do?" I have no idea. That was after a 10-minute hold. I called the city, they had no idea. I look outside, well, they, the street crew has come and put cones, so I can't even get out of my driveway. I'm on the phone with the city and they pit me in my driveway. Nothing, no communication from the city other than, "Oh, you're going to need a permit." By the way, watch guys from Brown.
They was able to walk out to get the permit information out.
Exactly. Oh, they were there. Two's name on it.
Yeah, thank you. There's somebody over there. Oh, sorry, sorry, Sophie.
Can we talk about the drainage systems being old and then the money to keep them in excellent? Well, given the mic. Okay, if the drainage systems are old and, you know, you're talking about the tax that we do them all and all that, well, if you know the infrastructure cannot support these new businesses, why are you allowing them to be built?
Thank you.
Thank you. I've given them a touch.
Ted, do you want to do this one?
As far as the question with the, yeah, why are they allowing these businesses to be built if we don't have a proper...
Yes, we know what the hell's going on.
I am.
What the hell we all sitting for?
Exactly.
In 2010, we did do a stormwater master plan. We updated our hydraulics and hydraulics for the city. We identified numerous homes and neighborhoods within the city that needed storm drainage improvements. We have a process in place where we identify what the flooding problem, how the flooding occurs, based on what citizens tell me. So I don't know, as an engineer, I don't know where the flooding is or the nature of it unless they come and tell me about it.
But you can't, you don't do studies, like, "We're going to put this Sutherland in, how's that going to affect the rest of the people around it?" Because I got a house now that's not worth crap.
Let me address, because you asked about the master plan, let me just address that first, okay? Because we do have a master plan where we identify where the problems that we know of are at. These are ones where we do storm drainage improvements and put new inlets in and new pipes. That's part of the, that's what the master plan with stormwater is about, okay? And so that was updated in 2010. That's the last update. Again, that information is based off what people tell me. Now, we only do the projects, I can only build them if I have money given to me to do the improvements. I, you know what I'm saying? So we identify what needs to be done. If there's no money available, they don't get done. So there's a list in there of projects that yet to be done, okay? Now, addressing what you're asking about development, as development comes, there is a process defined, defined in our code for engineering analysis for new developments. And the engineers that come in and work for that developer, like the Loves, had their engineers, Sutherland, they had their engineers, they all bring their engineers in, they do the analysis based off of the design standards that is adopted by the city. So if you look at the code, you can see what under sections of the code, section 415 of our municipal code, what our stormwater requirements are when they come in. And they have to look at downstream conditions, they have looked at upstream, they have to look at pre-development, they have to look at how much water they're putting in post. They're supposed to provide for their own stormwater that causes no adverse impacts to others.
So they're responsible then? If this, if their stormwater causes flooding in the neighborhoods, they would be responsible or is it the city? Who approves their point in from their engineer?
Right.
That's where I want it.
Yeah.
Their engineers are going to paint it all green and nappy and all great.
Well, they can't, but you know, as an engineer, we're licensed. We're licensed to perform our duty. And if we do things that aren't under accordance with code or cheating or doing something, painting green as you said, we could lose our license. And there's a lot of engineers that get in trouble and do that.
Who painted it green for the RV park? Because that RV park over there at the flooded drive got completely flooded, over $750,000 of individual stuff that was damaged. And on the first flood, that's just on the 22nd, and then it happened again, or 27th, and then it happened again to all of the, you know, that was in there at that time. Some of us just had liability, you know, and somebody had to approve Jason Winters to be able to build that park in there, you know? And all the tables on the outside of that place were tied down, everybody said it doesn't flood in there. That place flooded years ago is what I'm getting heard now, but when I moved in there, I was only in there about three days and I lost everything. I lost everything. I have four kids too, and there's lots of other families in there that lost everything too. Who's approving these places to be built?
Thank you.
Near these creeks? And the bad thing is, I didn't even find out until after the freaking flood happened that it was built on a federal floodplain. It's even down in a slope, it's behind the old Price Shopper that's in there, and that place fills up like a hole. Fills up completely like a hole. It's really sad if you guys allow that even go on, or happen. And you know, and the part that really gets me is, I'm on pins and needles every single time, now I can't even move my RV. I paid a whole bunch of money out to have this thing fixed, now I can't even get out of it, couldn't get out of it at all. There's only one entrance in the park, one entrance to leave the park, and it floods right at the entrance, right at the entrance. Who's liable for that? You know? Who's liable for all that to be, you know, just pushed under the water, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry does the deal." No, sorry doesn't do the deal. You know, I could have lost my family's lives. People, and now, you know, there's still no signs in the park whatsoever, and nothing on the website that says the place floods. Act of God. Well, I got something to tell you about act of God. Act of God has to do with me standing here and shooting you with a gun in the chest. And if you're not, if it goes around you, if it goes around you, that would be an act of God. If your house is built up on a hill and it floods, that might be an act of God. But if you build something on a federal floodplain and actually dig down a little bit, that would probably not be an act of God. You know? And a lot of families have lost a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff.
My understanding is that at one point in time, we had the money to rebuild the dam in the park. So at one point in time, to my understanding, the city had the funds to rebuild the dam at the park completely, brand new. Instead, we used it on a new police station.
Is that true? Is that, ask him, is that true?
Is this true?
I don't know.
Who would have? Who would have? Who would have? We can't answer anybody's questions in this entire room. We haven't answered one thing. They're not going to because they've been advised not to.
They've been advised, ask our board.
We're here to ask these questions to get answered so we could go home and maybe sleep a little better at night. My mother owns the trade fair, her and her husband Tommy, great people. So far, we have had people messaging us nasty messages on Facebook, driving by, screaming things because they're all saying that it was our sheds that made that backup, right? And then, so if we had the money to fix the dam and could create a lesser evil of this Harrisonville, everything is out of date, going out of date because we keep spending money on all of these other things, things that we should not even be doing. We could have done with that police station for a while in order to fix that dam to not have a bigger issue. We could have done without maybe even done all of the work on the dam to fix some of those drains. I lived in the South Street house that she is talking about that is flooded. And I had to move out of there because of the flood, over and over and over and over. And for the city to say, "Oh, well, you should call us every time it floods." Well, I would be calling you all the time, all the time. Well, and that's the least of our worries at that time. We're trying to save our stuff. The biggest issue is cleaning it up. And for you to say that it's, none of these drains are city issues and none of the, everybody's problems are not city's problems, I think that that's really low. I think that that's the lowest thing you can tell somebody in a devastation area.
Sorry to hear about you.
How many people could we turn into the FEMA? How many businesses and how many households were actually the numbers were turned in as a loss for Harrisonville? Like, fuck.
We don't know.
No, it's basically...
We don't know.
I have a question for everybody in here, just one simple question, because I haven't found one in this town. A retention pond in your area.
My backyard.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. I was in Belton, they got 75 that I found. Every, every...
We have one.
There's one back behind us.
A retention pond.
Up by Crown Carrot.
It stays dry except for when it rains. That's a retention pond. A retention pond is not full of water when it's on normal. Retention pond only fills up when a rain comes in, and then it drains out slowly. Belton and Rainmore have 75 of them. Every community, they have one. I think every 10 houses, they have one towards the bottom. It fills up, it's got a 12-inch pipe that allows it out easier. But anyway, everybody's got good concerns here. I ripped my leg up going and taking pictures and climbing through these culverts and everything. Down by the RV park, it's almost completely blocked off. If you've been on my Facebook page, you can see the trees and everything climbed, grown over. You go down there by Loves, the water flows west, just so you all know. That creek there, not muddy creek, it goes up through Edgewell and all that. Muddy creek goes out by Johnson's and, I can't remember the one that cuts through, out to Seven South. But anyway, all that.
Orchard.
Orchard. It goes out there to Orchard. That one's blocked up. The water runs over top of that.
Yeah, sure has.
We need a retention pond right there to help everybody downstream. The problem is, we cannot start at the top, guys. We got to start down here by 71 High Lake.
Just clear it out.
Yep. Start there, clean it out, move up. That way, we're getting it down. Because if we start up here clearing it out, all it's going to do is back up again.
That's true, so true.
Can we get an engineer to figure that out so we can get that taken care of? Was it the homeowners? Was it the people? Are we supposed to pay to have an engineer come in and figure this out?
Because they told us we had to pay for the dam.
The city overstepped their boundaries when they rerouted the creek down there by Sutherland and everything.
Absolutely.
Because it used to come in, wind across the field and go straight into... Yeah, it's all blocked. But it would use to wind across there and go between Sutherland and come in. It was way low. It was probably 10, 15 feet lower than it is now.
And Sutherland used to pond up, like what you're saying, we need, that used to be Sutherland. That was the retention.
The other deal is, all the trees, all the trees down there from where you go into the south entrance of Sutherland, you come around that corner, it's a hydro flood.
And those pictures are all in your packets.
Does anybody know what a hydro lift is?
That's all in your packets.
The water comes down low and it just keeps pushing. It can't go through the trees, it can't get through the culvert. The sheds, everybody's throwing a fit up in the sheds. Well, if the water was flowing, it would have never floated them. It would have to get two to three foot deep, maybe four foot deep before it lifts those sheds and takes off with us. They weren't down at the bottom, they were sitting on top. The bottoms were still open. The, down there by the RV, I want to go back to that. That ditch winds up between old Price Shopper or old Walmart and out through there. There's not one retention pond right out here in this new housing district, not one. All that asphalt, all those roads here and them, is dumping all the extra water down that. There is not one retention pond in this town that I can find, not one. That is ridiculous.
You can't even build a new house. You can't even build a new house in Leewood, a new house, without a retention pond.
True. A new house, one house. You're responsible for all your floodwater coming off of your property. Everybody knows where I live, out here on 2 Highway, by the bridge and everything. By federal guidelines, I cannot interrupt the water entering and leaving my property. I can't touch that river.
Can't touch a creek either.
No.
Don't you dare.
Don't you dare.
But, uh, DNR, when the customers thought I was doing something wrong, they came down, they sent DNR out there, EPA, um, Corps of Engineers, trying to get me shut down, saying I couldn't build up around my house to make it more safe and everything. The house sat there since nineteen sixty-eight, seventy-two, somewhere around there, Thompson's house, everything. I have walked the walk, I've done everything by the book. People, you're very informed, I appreciate that. You're very informed too, young lady. And being informed, huh? These people up here, we elected them, we hired them and everything, that don't mean they know what they're doing. Two thousand one, when we had eleven inches of rain, and Belton and them got eight and a half inches of rain, and Lincoln had got wiped out, I was an alderman. I can't swim, people. I was out there helping everybody. I was terrified, because I can't swim. I'm fifty years old. I can probably dog pound from here, and Thomas will be out of breath.
We never got that, we never got that help extended to us, except Judy showing up first, and it wasn't...
But that's the difference.
Thank you, Judy.
I'm the man of my word, and that's, that's all it is. Everyone up here, I know some of these guys, I respect the hell out of them. Because they put their lives on line, right, to represent us and everything. But they're not getting informed either. I talked to the state back in March, after I got my side of the side, and I started riding these creeks and having fun. I talked to an alderman in town, saying that there was, uh, drainage tissue. I guess none of them thawed up on what I told them. I'm just a dumb redneck. Well, this dumb redneck goes out of his way to help more people and everything. These people help everybody. I don't know you, because I can't judge you. No? But we've got to be responsible too. No? We gotta stand up for what's right. We gotta stand up and make these guys accountable. The commissioners accountable, well, everybody accountable. The judges out there that's handing down sentences that are messed up. All of us need to stand up and do what's right. This flood drain, clean and everything, Southern's came in, cut all the trees down. Did they clean the ditch up? No.
No, they...
The ditch is four foot wide. It used to be from here to Crystal, well, the back wall. You don't realize it, but when you take four foot, uh, uh, fill out of those ditches, that's a lot of water. And if it's going through the bridges and everything, it's not hydro lifting back. I'm just a dumb redneck, but I guarantee ya, I know a lot more, because I've lived around rivers, I've watched it, I have fought it. We need retention ponds, we need the culverts cleaned out, we need these, the brush, we don't need to, uh, pull the trees out, but we need to cut them off, huh? Unless they're in the part that's filled in, then we need to clean it back, get it back to the rip ramp. That's all I have to say. So we need to start down at Seventy-One and go back and forth.
Thank you, that is so true.
She's waiting a little while.
Yeah, I'm kind of backward when talking about flood insurance. I live on Joe and Walter, and we did not get floodwater, we got main drain back. My question is, if the ditches were maintained and cleaned out, would mine drain back up?
Again, we're talking about a significant amount of water, and they came down and were worried about it.
Hey, ladies and gentlemen, just ask this. I need to know from you directly, were you informed today or yesterday not to answer any of our questions?
At any time.
At any time. No, from nobody.
Mayor or nobody.
Because it seems to me that we're all talking...
Hang on, he's got to answer.
Now, this meeting, this point meeting, for city staff...
Nobody's answering. Then why? He's gonna answer if he was writing a letter or an email, anything.
If you have any questions, you can talk to us afterward.
No, I want that answered right now.
What? She just asked... Well, but first of all, she just asked a question. There were several people that have asked questions. We still wanna know what's gonna happen moving forward. Because if it, if it rains heavily, we're gonna be flooded again. We've already discussed it. Yet we have not heard a single thing from any of you on what you all are gonna do. You contacted MODOT today to get that taken care of, but if MODOT drags their feet for two weeks, and we get substantial rain that we don't anticipate, then we're gonna be flooded. Why do you guys just not go and get it out?
I talked to MODOT today, and they're fluent. They have no idea that this is going on.
I've contacted MODOT much, and I've contacted the city operator in March.
So I guess my question is, will you, will you answer our questions? Why are you not answering our questions?
MODOT would give us the right to do that. It is their property, so we don't have the right to go on their property and do and work on it.
Okay, so...
Why are you just waiting now to contact them?
You find, you find everybody else.
Hold on, hold on, one more time, please.
So, back to her question, even if that was, even if we had substantial rainfall, which we did during this timeframe, but they also got flooded twice, their basement got hit twice. Now, prior to that, what's the other, the other rain that we had, you had no issues, correct? No. But in that, we had substantial flooding, we had things that were blocking the creek. I'm sorry, there were sheds there, and it's not because, I mean, they just blew there and it blocked the thing.
But if they were floating, until it drains, it does not...
Yes, yes, correct.
They didn't start till it went down.
Correct, correct. But there are also utility poles that were down there, and the ditches have all this extra rain off. There were a lot of factors here. It wasn't just substantial rains.
They need to clean off between Commercial Street...
Yes.
And Forty-Nine Highway and clean that ditch out.
So I guess as citizens, when are we gonna get that, when is that gonna be taken care of? Because are we gonna have to actually call and follow through? Because I really don't feel as if though that should be my job, because we elected you all to represent us.
You come out and find us and say, "We will do it," and then bill you, why are you not doing it for them and billing them later? Because you know your citizens are gonna suffer from this. I mean, I feel like that is a quick thing. You don't find us in a minute, but you'll go ahead and do it, and then find us for it. Why are you guys not doing that for the drains? Because you know that right now could be a temporary fix, quick.
And if the answer is, you're not going to do it, tell us and we'll get it done.
We'll get it done, we'll take the...
We'll protect our own places.
We'll do it, we've got enough people that have backups, we'll go down and dig it and clean it ourselves.
We will look at that, yeah. That's something we can tell, we can talk about internally, to make sure we're not getting on private property, we're not supposed to...
We don't care, so if you're not gonna do it...
If you're not gonna do it, who is?
We're talking about the culverts underneath the roads. They are blocked up!
No, I, I understand that.
We're not on private property right now, we're worried about the city not taking care of their property. Last year, this quarter, shit, maybe forty percent blocked up.
So we need to do this tomorrow.
Okay, we, we can hash, we can hash the culverts all we want, we, we hear the culverts are blocked, we know they're MODOT's culverts, and we do need to call them. As far as the...
Did they?
Let me tell you, Mr. Martin has some stats on the rain, on how much rain we got, and we looked at it before the meeting, on what, what our system's designed to handle, and what it did handle. That's a big part of it. As far as the process to do all this, I can't remember in the forty years living here seeing anything like this. You come in, I don't know that we have a disaster relief plan in place, I'd have to look it up. That's one of the big things. That's one of the, we have been looking these things up, we've been very busy researching everything we can.
Really? Because we don't have any questions answered from the time before.
We're trying to find out if we could, like he said, the ditches, a lot of the ditches are private property, which I've had a lot of people, "We went back and walked your ditch, that's private property." That's, I think Mr. Cook owns that property.
So, let me just, can I just, let me, so on that, because this comes from the city, this came from the assessment, this part of the creek is private property, but this part right here, these ditches, that's, I'm assuming a state?
It's state, correct.
So, so when I talked to you about this, we shook hands, we're in my neighborhood, you said you were gonna contact, it has been a week, a week, and you're telling me that today you all contacted, and really, I don't even know that that happened, because this gentleman talked to MODOT, and they didn't know anything about it. So why did it take a week? When we spoke, you saw the devastation, you know that that's not private property, that, and your map show it, this is state, this is, this is for the state. Why are we, why, why is nothing even done? That is, that is one of the main issues about flooding right now, along with all of the other things. This isn't just a one thing, this isn't just because we don't have enough, uh, pipeline underneath or sewage space, it, there is a, there is a magnitude of things, and this is one of the contributing factors. This stuff is not clear. There is debris in these things that have been sitting there for years. You're exactly right. So moving forward, when, how soon can we anticipate this being done? Because we know that this is a private property. Now, the stuff that's on here, that's private property, the stuff that's on, on, uh, the hotel side, is, is private property.
Which, which we have, we haven't really talked about that, we've talked mainly about the culverts. And the question was asked, can we go in there and do that? So, Eric, I would assume we can't go on MODOT's playground, as you said, I know we can't, okay, we can't plow their streets, I know that for a fact.
MODOT doesn't know what is their property, and Harrisonville knows their property. When you're calling, you ask, and you have a problem, and you say, "Hey, who owns this? Does Harrisonville, do I call Harrisonville about this, or do I call MODOT?" And you go back and forth, and back and forth. Somebody's gotta know who owns what, where.
DNR is the one that calls in the creek, that can clean the creek. They told us, we own the whole creek line from the mo, road all the way back. We were cleaning out all those dead trees that kept getting clogged up in that drain when we were calling MODOT. So we personally went in there and cleaned out all those trees. DNR stopped by and said, "You're not allowed to kill, to take out any trees out of that drain."
Who is DNR?
So, they did not, they are control. We can't even finish taking trees to make it open, so that it's be more open for you guys, we can't make that ditch any wider.
Because you're changing a waterway.
Even though, even though those trees out of there would help with the water, we cannot take anymore out. We take the dead ones as they fall in, because every rain, we are pulling out tree after tree, so that it does not block up in that drain anymore. Two thousand seven was not because of the rain flowed so much, it's because of so many, we did not own that property. So many trees floated down that creek and flooded up the hole. I don't know if anybody's in the fire department, it's not, because fire department is actually the one that took the trees out of the culvert, to get the rain to go down. It did not go in our building then, it did go in Russell's sofas and the hotel bit, but it did not go in our building. So the water has been diverted and now over there, the Russell sofas is now saved, but it's coming over our way. Because the ditches aren't as deep. But DNR is in charge of the trees. We even wouldn't mind taking and widening that creek to help everybody, because it would help us too. We own that property, but it's not up to us, it's up to DNR.
You've done this for a long time, you've been a part of the community for a long time, have you seen it progressively get worse, from the time you owned it to now?
Yes, because of, if you go over to the, the hotel area and look back, it used to be a straight down ditch. It used to be a straight down ditch. Now you've got a, a beat for light waterways to go through, and then you have another beat, and you've got a ten or twenty foot wall of dirt that stands in the middle. MODOT, when they cleaned out our drainway, with two thousand seven, started calling all those people, called it, two thousand ten again, they came out and cleaned, but they would only clean so much, because of DNR. That dirt is technically, if it's not in the culvert, not their problem. It is part of the DNR.
So then, so then who do we need to contact?
So that's where the city, that is where the city has to represent.
Eric, who do we need to...
There's a catch twenty-two, we're all fucking...
Who do we need to talk to at DNR, or at MODOT? Who do we need to contact to find out what they're planning to do with it? I mean, here we're getting, we're getting information that they didn't know about it. So who do we need to contact, who do we need to talk to, and when can we get an update from them? And I, and I mean, I'm not, not throwing her under the bus, we do have a state representative with us, she does, we do have a voice in our community, this is Donna Fouch. So, we're seeing that, that, that MODOT needs to get this creek cleaned, who do we need to contact, how long can we expect?
We'll contact their regional office, we'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there a number we can get for them?
I can tell you, I don't have an office.
Can we, can we...
Can you get that on his page?
It'll be, it's, their number will be on their website.
Hold on, Mr. Jacob has a...
When I went to MODOT, I went to the website, make a form right there.
So, so you go on MODOT to make your form, he goes on MODOT's website to make your guys, you have all the...
So, so Eric, Eric will contact them, we will put an update out on our Facebook page on what he finds out from MODOT, and what their plans are. Oh, excuse me, we will put, he's going to contact his, the regional office tomorrow, and what we find out, we will post out on our page to update everybody, so we know what they have planned, if anything planned, to address those culverts. Because that honestly, we can beat this around all night, others can answer what MODOT's gonna do, and that's what we need to find out, and we will find that out. I apologize if there's been a delay, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing that there has been a delay, and I understand everybody is upset and frustrated, and you have every right to be that way. So, we will be getting in contact, getting that information.
Ms. Mary, I got a question.
Okay.
Okay, I pay my water and sewage just like anybody else in here. I have a lot of other bills to pay for services. If that service fails me, they're responsible for it, okay? So my question is to you, I've offered to expose my main drainage pipe to the city's main, and if I am up to code for what the city requires, then how am I liable for a city backup in my house?
Does anybody have an answer to that now, or is that something that you would need time?
No, we'd like to hear from them. Yeah, we'd like to hear from them.
And I believe you're, what, three thousand two younger?
That's correct.
And I have talked to you, and I thank Robert Edwards, my superintendent.
I am Eric.
I think, I don't know if he actually talked to you, but I know he tried to call you, and he said he left a message today.
Just today, yes.
And I apologize for him, he's actually been out, he messed up in our, a week ago, so he's been a little slow getting around.
Correct.
So my, my question is though, um, I guess to you right now then, if I expose my pipe, everything on my end is up to city code. I have no other options for sewage, I have to pay the city for sewage. If it's failing me, I have no other options. So, the city's sewage is failing me, am I responsible, or are you...
Well, that falls under building codes, which the city has adopted the international building codes. That is a minimum of what must be done to get your sewer to drain.
With that backwater valve work?
No, but that's code. If it, if it had a backflow preventer, which is what you're calling backwater valve, it would have stopped water from coming back in.
Are you responsible for putting them in on the homes?
No, that is a builder's job.
What year did you adopt it, the international code? There was code for it to go in.
It gets re-adopted as new versions come out?
I know it was back in two thousand three, but my home was built, and it was not put on. Yeah, so it was not, so is the city responsible for putting that?
One second, one second, please.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I got the code. Here, I got it, I got it on it. I got the code on it. I got it highlighted for you.
That's the county emergency management director, you talking about for, um, uh, MERS? No, not FEMA. For FEMA, then... Yeah, but then they have it, then they have it to the city, and our city wants it as a milestone. For the city, and then yet he answers to FEMA, to the county.
Okay, I want, I want to get some more questions, because we're gonna run out of time, as far as this time is on. Eric, his question, is that something we need to get back to him on? He's wanting...
Yes, we're gonna need to do some checks.
So they will, they will get back to you, we can't give you an exact answer now, and I don't want to give you an answer that's not right. Pass, I know you've had your hand up.
Well, I've been here. I've lived in my homes since two thousand and two, through the my first rodeo with this damn muddy creek.
Right.
Mr. Martin's been out to my house numerous times, trying to solve this issue, and come up with something that was equitable for myself and my life. There was even talk at one point in time to buy us out. FEMA said, "Oh, hell no, there's not enough money. I'm losing property, I, I can't tell you how many times I've fixed that fence, so I have to have around my swimming pool." Last Monday, I spent two grand getting it fixed, it didn't stand in twenty-four hours. That aside, I don't have poop in my house, so I don't, you know, you guys are struggling with a hell of a lot more than I am. You've lived in this community a lot longer than I have, I'm sure, before this house in two thousand two, I lived on Stacy with my first wife. I never solved my house, my, my house is the one with the school crosswalk on South Street, where the big giant sycamore tree is, and that piece of crap box culvert that's not a bridge, but MODOT doesn't want to own up to it, they don't want to take care of it, they don't want to replace it.
Well, the water goes up and over that.
But you guys, you're pissing in the wind, if you think you're gonna get Department of Natural Resources to do anything. They've been to my house, and they're, "Oh yeah, you can't do nothing to that damn creek, it's gotta stay all natural," because it's got a name, it's called Muddy Creek. So any of y'all that wishes to clean that crap out, they're not gonna do it. How they ever reconfigured it around Southern Lumber, it's been, somebody must have paid somebody off to get that creek reconfigured there. And then, who's supposed to keep it clean, so the water will run on down? You know, we got a new box culvert bridge on Orchard there, but they won't do nothing by my house. And so everything from Bird, where all that crap was fixed several years back, between Rin and Meadowlark, by putting in the big stainless tubes, or whatever you call it, galvanized tube with the ground collector, that makes that water haul ass, till it gets That makes that water haul ass until it gets on this side or my side of Byrd Street. And then it gets into that creek and everything else is fine. And then it gets backed up by the damn bridge by my house. And then backed up some more on down the road by Trade Fair. And every other place it can get backed up because it meanders and goes all around. Hell, I never even thought about the Lowe's having any effect on it. Because I know the creek used to go the other side of seventy-one highway and eventually into the Grand River. So, you know, when's this crap going to end? I'll sell my house today for what I owe. And I'll be gone in a heartbeat. I'm sick of it. Fifteen years and nobody can seem to do anything. We're worried about the dam over there on Lake Minut, I get that. You know, that's probably something that needs to be addressed. That lake was drained a few years back because there was, they were doing a fricking site survey to see if they could take a, I don't know what it was, a freshwater pipe or sewer pipe or something.
Yeah.
Down in the middle of it. There's nothing ever happened there, I guess. And they allowed the lake to fill back up. Now all we've got's our beautiful fireworks on the Fourth of July then.
And actually, it's the, I mean, it's the dam, but it's the spillway.
Yeah, I know.
The spillway is actually designed to have water come over the top of it.
Idiot on TV called spillway. Regardless, nothing's ever going to get done, right? It never gets done. Haven't been a damn thing gets done to that creek in the fifteen years I've owned that house. Except to take my stuff down the creek and my friends. Well, I'm done. You know, Mr. Martin's a great guy. And he tried his level best to get somebody to buy our house and the brick house next door and the one on the other side of it. And it just couldn't get done because there's no money. And the Department of Natural Resources, they're going to do jack squat. Trust me.
Do we know what the fines are for cutting down those trees? Because I bet you it's less than what damage on the homes are.
I don't know, but.
We got a gentleman back here who's had his hand up a little while.
Okay, so I got a few points to hit on.
Okay.
Number one, and I know most of you are going to enjoy hearing this and hookey holler, but you guys have been sidestepping just darn near to every question that's been asked.
Absolutely.
Just darn near to every question has either been sidestepped or roundabout answered. And you guys call a meeting, but then you don't answer questions. And you say, well, you can ask us after the meeting. Then why are we having a meeting? Number two.
I mean, you knew that we was coming.
Please, 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 please.
You've been talking most of the meetings. Number two. Where do these creeks run from? The one that comes down from the lake where this dam blew out to the side, the spillway blew out to the side. It comes down next to Price Chopper. It goes across underneath seventy-one highway. And it goes out by the sewage plant or water plant that's out there across next to the sheriff's department. The other creek, the one that caused all the flooding on Walker Drive, comes down across Orchard Road, down behind all those houses, underneath Commercial Street, next to the Comfort Inn and Suites, underneath seventy-one highway, to the south of where the one that goes by Price Chopper goes under. It goes under out by the tow yard out there and continues on its way. They meet out on a gravel road out there. I can tell you from chasing that one, the water was about eight feet high on that gravel road. I've never seen it that high. I'm twenty-four years old and I've been around Harrisonville for most of my life. I've never seen it that high. It goes from there, it goes on out around a gravel road and out underneath an iron bridge. The water was two and a half feet over that iron bridge. I measured it. Two and a half feet over that iron bridge. Now, all I'm getting at on that point, it would not have mattered how clean these culverts. Where you could have dug the road out where those culverts were and it still would have backed up, I promise you that. I'm not telling you guys are all wrong, but it would have still backed up. There's nothing that's going to do. So is it the city's fault on this one? No, probably not. But the next time when we don't get as much rain and you still get flooded because those culverts are all backed up and it didn't go over the bridge three miles later, that's the city's fault. And it will happen again. When you get less rain and you still get flooded, even though it wasn't a ridiculous amount of rain. As far as the sheds go, the sheds were not a problem. I promise you, I was out there. The sheds were floating in the water. Sheds don't float in the water and still clog a drain. They were above the drain. As far as the dam goes, just a suggestion, maybe your engineers might enjoy this one, but why don't we treat this like something that you would do at, say, Table Rock Dam? Where when you expect rain coming three or four days in advance, have a twelve inch drain pipe that goes through that dam and start releasing some of that water out of Lake Luna. Drop that lake level by two or three feet. And then when it rains like crazy, it fills the lake back up instead of immediately rushing over the top of the lake dam and inundating the houses and businesses below it. We might be able to prevent at least half of it with a twelve inch pipe that's pretty cheap. As far as Walker Drive, I don't know that there's a really good suggestion for that, guys, other than building a great big dam along the entire side of that creek.
Well, so this is where I'm going to disagree with you on that because I've lived there for quite a long time and we have had torrential, we have had mass amount of flooding. And it has never came to that point. The creek has filled up back there for sure. The water has come into my yard about a third of the way through to maybe my ankles. It has not come into my house a foot and a half.
Okay, I live on Kirk Street. And I've lived there since I was two years old. I moved down to Adrian for a time, but I came back. And I can tell you, before they built all those houses back there, it used to flood like crazy back there.
It sure did.
It used to be a field back there. And that field was a mess constantly. Now, I'm not saying that this is the city's problem, but whoever built back there should have been responsible enough to build that up.
Yeah, so first of all, I didn't buy that house when it first, but it's, there was a builder who bought that and the city approved them to build above that. So it's not the people who bought the homes there responsible.
You're right. Whoever built it, whoever built it did not build that up high enough. That's who I'd be responsible for. I'm good.
So as far as utilities for next month for us, and this is for anybody who's been flooded. We're having to use a lot of fans. We're having to use a lot of electricity. Is the city going to compensate us any at all for that? Because we're having to dry out our homes. We're running fans twenty-four seven. And I know for a fact our electricity is going to be off the charts, off the charts. So is the city going to do anything to help alleviate any of that? Because I know for a fact we've had residents, the first flood, their utility bill went up over two hundred dollars or more.
Three hundred dollars?
Yes. And also too, so there's that question. And then also too, for us dumping. Because every time we haul things out to dump, or every time that we're having to rent those things, those dumpsters, if we need a big one, it costs almost four hundred dollars. So are we going to, are we going to, is there any way you can talk to the city or talk to the county, or it's not county, it's WCA? To see if they can help with that? Because that's a lot of extra expense that we're taking on as well.
As far as utility goes, that'd be something the board would have to discuss. The board would have to vote. I sure cannot answer that question, I think we could do that. Because I couldn't say that we would do that because I don't have that authority. The board would have to discuss that and would have to be, you know, is there something they can do? So what's going to require a discussion is probably at a work session to discuss that matter. Why they could do that. As far as the dumpsters go, you know, we're in a contractual agreement with them for residential trash pickup. We don't have a lot of pull, I guess you could say, to say, hey, can you, you know, cut a deal? I mean, I'd be more than happy to try to contact one of them and say, hey, is there anything you can do to flood victims? I don't know if they will or not. I can't speak, they're a corporation. I can't force them to do anything. City Council can't pass anything to make them do anything. I know Roll Off Services is one of the places that's some people getting dumpster. I don't know if they're offering any type of discount.
No, it's not. We're calling, we're talking about it flooded.
They put two dumpsters out.
Well, they did, but that business is actually not even going back in there because they've lost their business twice. And the dumpsters were so big that they were completely full. I mean, they did allow us to put stuff in that, but it filled up so quickly.
Okay, I have two more questions over here. Did you have, ma'am, did you still have one? You had had your hand up a minute ago.
I live around the nine hundred block of East Mechanic. And they just put all new storm drains, new highway in there last year. And right there at Wall Street, about the nine hundred block of Wall Street, there's a big storm drain. And every time it rains, that they, I was told, I've only been here five years, but I was told the city dug out a trench so that water would come out of that storm drain and come down and then go like this to Mechanic Street. And now it's draining to the new storm drains on Mechanic. The problem is, is the ditch is always full. Nobody maintains it. And I hate to admit it, but I've been up to the city twice and complained because the weeds in it get five and six foot tall. Nobody maintains that ditch. And that water just rolls out and comes back and floods in my yard every time we get a pretty decent rain. So I, is the, I know that Pearl and Wall Street, all of that area up there feeds that storm drain because I'm sitting lower than that. And the drain, now I see rats all the time going back and running along my property because the ditch is so full of just junk and weeds. And I mean, a month ago, I went out and cleaned up my yard and I had everything down to used needles in my yard from that ditch where we've had drogues that cross that path often. And so who is responsible for cleaning that ditch out, keeping it trimmed? Because whoever got the letter when I complained, they just come out and weedied it and all the weeds just lay right on top of the ditch. So then the water's just doing this right into my yard. And I keep getting dirt washed off because I have two other properties right there and I get all their rain. So is there plans for Wall Street to connect into the new sewer plan?
I do not know what, I do not know the location you're talking about, but I'll find out. And I do not, do not know about digging these things. And my department would have done that.
Well, it's deep.
If we did that, it's our ditch, we would take care of it. I don't even, I don't even know about that. Boy, it's a shame.
Well, I've talked to the city and they told me that the people that own the, one of the fourplexes are responsible for pushing that ditch cleared out. And I guess that's where they sent the letter to say we need to clean this up.
And so most likely it's not, it's not the city ditch responsible. Most likely it's just the waterways through property.
I don't know. My neighbor's house has sunk six inches because the water's running all through.
Are you by chance on King Street?
No, I'm right on Mechanic, but King Street's the next street over. And I, I think that I read King Street was going to be part of the new, another project to hook up to the main sewers.
We do have a storm drainage project identified between King and Pearl. That's on the list.
I'm talking about the big storm drain that sits right around nine hundred Wall Street. And there's a big ditch.
I do know about the King Street. It goes from King, from Mechanic to Pearl.
I can visualize that. I don't think it's a question, I think it's kind of a problem.
No, that's, that's unlikely.
Yes, sir.
I understand you guys have been flooded with a lot of questions. No pun intended, I'm sorry. So just very simply, has anybody contacted National Weather Service to see the likelihood that tropical storm Harvey would actually dip our direction? Yes or no?
Yes. What's the?
What is your contingency plan? Okay, in the unlikely event we get unpredicted torrential rain, what should we do?
Well, I can explain one thing to you.
I'm like hell.
I can explain one thing to you. A lot of people don't understand the difference between a watch and a warning.
Thank you.
Okay. A watch means there's a possibility that something might happen, like for example, a flash flood watch, tornado watch, thunderstorm watch. A lot of people don't understand that. That basically means the conditions are favorable. For the example, for the flood that happened on the twenty-second, earlier that evening, if everybody remembered, we were put under a flash flood watch. Okay? When the rain event started around midnight, around one thirty-ish midnight, I was monitoring radio traffic that night. Most of the rain started north of town in the belt area. Belt started raining a lot of water rescues, a lot of water over the highways, over the thoroughfare. About one to one thirty in our time period, I was out driving around the community and monitoring situation. The area where it's, on Walker Drive, it happened. When I approached the area around, it was probably around oneish in that time between one and one thirty, the creek in that suspicious area was completely full. There's a person that lives on Walker Road that works for my department. And I'm sure you all know who he is. I called him on the telephone. I said, you probably got to get people up, let them know you guys are getting ready to flood. At that time, within probably fifteen, twenty minutes time period, that creek had come completely out all over the place in that area. The person I'm talking about, he did not receive water the first time. The second time, he actually had water that was in his house. So we knew it was drastically worse at that time. At the time, around one, around twelve thirty to one, between twelve and twelve thirty, National Weather Service issued a flash flood warning. Okay? And basically what a flash flood warning means is that a flash flood is, a flash flood is in, and it's going to happen in this area. The magnitude of it, they don't know. Only way is they gauge it off of is radar indicated rain. Okay? Just like the same way they do with a tornado. Unless you have somebody that's out looking in the area for a tornado and they spot it. Okay? That's what they call a spotter activated tornado. A lot of times the National Weather Service will basically say that whenever they have a tornado that's radar indicated, means that it shows rotation on the radar. In other words, it's kind of a big scientific thing. So at that time, initially, two or three hours prior to this event, they issued a flash flood watch. As far as notification in the area, and I know there was a question that was asked a little bit ago about whether we were in the area at the time. There was two issues that happened in that night. The reason why we weren't in the area at the time. One, we were extremely busy on, like we had water rescues on South, on South Street, the bridge that everybody was talking about, where people were trapped on top of the vehicle. The other reason why we weren't in the area is that it became inaccessible on both sides. Okay? So basically what we did is we took our heavy duty truck and drove it down in there. And we actually helped several of the residents get notified on Jill and Walker that the water was up and they needed to get out.
Yeah, you knocked on the door at two o'clock. Yes.
So that was generally around the time period.
Yes.
So I don't know any other way of activating and letting you guys know on my end. Because I mean, it's my responsibility to make sure that people are warned. But it is, I'm not pushing it off on you. But if there's a possibility of a flash flood watch, it's kind of a good idea that you probably ought to be watching what's going on. As far as the flooding and stuff like that, I would, I would love to know to come in. I notify you every time. You know what I mean? But I can't, I really can't gauge off my visual whether it's going to flood or not. Only reason, like I said, is when I went down there and saw that, the creek that was up high, that's when I made a notification that you probably ought to let people know it's getting ready to flood again. Okay, good.
What about like the tornado sirens? Is that something that could have been sounded off to wake people up or alert them?
Well, here's the issue. A lot of people don't understand about tornado sirens. The tornado sirens are considered outside warning devices. Okay? They're designed for, for people that are, for outside at the time on a tornado. Okay? That's why we encourage everybody to buy weather radios. Yeah? Weather radios, they do warn, they do warn you about flash flood warnings too. Okay? Usually, and if you guys want to get one, I'm sorry, it's, it costs you twenty, thirty bucks to buy one.
There's an app that's free though. The app does the same thing. And it went off about the same time that you all knocked on the door. Yeah. So if water happens quickly.
Very much so. Have you guys all noticed that?
Absolutely.
Exactly. But what I'm telling you guys is that if I set off a tornado sirens every time that there's a warning, I have few people that are going to be asleep at two o'clock in the morning, are not going to hear it. They're not designed for that. They're designed for outside warning.
Well, they're designed for tornadoes. Would you hear a tornado siren, what are you supposed to do?
Go to your basement.
I understand your point. I really do. I mean, I wish there was a way that we could develop something in the area that would give you a further warning. I mean, a lot of places like that have dams around their houses. You know, big dams like Bagwell Dam and stuff, when they open their flood gase, they actually sound a siren to let people know that they're letting, they're releasing water. Okay? That lets people know down the stream that they're releasing water. But, you know.
There was, I did, I was, I was an everyday citizen. Like you said, I got down there right up, you guys did, because you couldn't get to the neighborhood. I was stuck in there trying to get from, to the water. Uh, there was officers, I saw two officers, I've got their hell's their sirens on. I figured that's what they're trying to do is wake up their neighborhood. Here was mine, the bank, everyday, and it was also flooding. So like I was saying, just a way to, hey everybody, it's like you're shit about your under, kind of warning.
Okay, just a few more questions, ma'am, I know you.
Yeah, and I came in late, so, and I heard this gentleman talking here on the end. Um, and he's referred to it again as a, a master plan, um, and I assume that's for like the drainage and everything in, in Harrisonville.
Master stormwater.
Master, has, has overall Walker Drive, uh, that has been evaluated?
That has not been part of the stormwater master plan, there's things came up, uh.
I brought that up in two thousand and seven.
Yes, you told, you did, you are, I didn't relate years to Walker, you're over on.
Joy Street, which is still in the same.
And you are in that master plan, you're in there. And, and it goes back to meeting Lomani and going through there, that is actually a project.
And that is part of Walker, because it's gonna come off our property, onto Walker, through our next piece of property and into the creek.
Okay, that, that means.
That area has been in there, but anything with the Walker area, no, there's not been anything there.
Okay, so then.
Walker sits lower than that area.
Exactly, and, and.
Wouldn't that be just kind of common sense that that's a problem area, that wouldn't below it be a problem area?
Uh, there's not been a lot of complaints with flooding over there.
I've been there, I've been there two months.
Southern is in Love.
Yeah, I didn't ask my question.
I mean, she still needs to ask a question.
So that, with it being, if, if it's on the master plan, does that mean that area is, oh, say, say it's overtaxed already and it's, something needs to be done?
Well, in the master plan, we identify where complaints are coming out of flooding. Then what I do is I go in and look at a conceptual compare to that. That might be bigger pipes, that might be more inlets, it might be a larger culvert, it might be something like that. I go through and I lay out that out, I put cost to it, we develop benefit cost ratio and, and put it in the system for future work.
Okay.
Now, until it gets funded, it stays there.
Okay, so if, if, if it's already overtaxed, it already needs to be redone, it already needs this, that, and the other thing, and we're just waiting on funding. And we have three commercial places that have been built right there in that area, and I assume their drainage comes in too? It's kind of grouped together with all that, is that, is that true? Is that a safe assumption, since it's all in that general area?
Referring to Sutherland's and Loves.
And Loves and the hotel.
Okay, okay. I think the way it would flow would be this, uh.
I mean, it goes downhill.
Exactly, so Walker would flow to the culvert, culvert would flow to Sutherland's, right? Sutherland's then flows to Loves, and Loves on out to, does it need to sit?
So none of those commercial buildings should affect Walker, is what you're saying to me, in that drainage?
Well, I didn't say that, I just said that's how it flowed in the direction, I made that determination.
I'm sorry?
All I said is that's the direction it flows. Does it flow that way?
I, I, I couldn't say.
Okay, it flows from Walker. Which direction?
I just assume it flows downhill.
Right, well, what you're referring to is the water's going, right, the water's going from where you're at.
Yeah.
Past Sutherland's, on past Loves.
So really Walker should be affecting them, not the other way around?
Well, Walker's upstream of them, right?
In theory.
Walker's upstream of them, right?
Okay, yeah, I mean, it should be, yeah. Okay, there we go, if it's dammed up, it affects one to others.
Sutherland's, Loves has a retention. That's true.
Okay, so that being said, if, if we already have a tax system, you know, that, that we've got issue, issues with. And I, and I heard the question asked when I walked in and nobody responded, who signed off on all of that commercial stuff? When we already have systems that are taxed?
Abby, do you want this one or you want me to attempt to?
Go ahead, Brian.
With the rest of the business, you go in.
And in essence, didn't protect the citizens of Harrisonville.
So they would have met a minimum code, our, our code ordinances has a stormwater plan in their stormwater section in there. It says if you're going to put in a business that, if it's gonna put concrete in, or asphalt, or rock, or what it's gonna be. If it doesn't meet a certain criteria, then you couldn't do it. But if it does meet a certain criteria, if you put in stormwater drainage, if you put in retention, you're allowed to put that in.
So all of their stuff met what, what your code is for the city?
What I'm assuming, again, since I wasn't here, but with the previous administration, there, all of these regulations were in place. And they also had to do some extra studies for the Sutherland's because it is closer to the flood plain. That they, by doing that extra engineering, they were allowed to go in because they met the minimum criteria.
But has anyone followed up to make sure that, that, I mean, because if it was from the prior administration, right? It says nothing to do with you, I mean, I'm not looking to push blame here, so let, it was for your time. But obviously since then, these things are happening. So has anyone thought, we probably need to look into this and make sure that, that all that really was up to code? Because I'm telling you, that's the common denominator. It, it's not, I mean, the culvers and stuff that are, are not cleaned out, that is a, that is definitely part of it. But all the extra businesses, we've had two major rains, and Loves and Sutherland, those big businesses are there where they weren't before, and that's when we're getting flooded, so. So there has, there has to be, for me, it's just, it's plain common sense. So I don't understa, have any of you thought about, hey, look, especially after the first one three weeks ago, saying, hey, maybe we need to look at this. We've got an engineer, we, we need to hire someone to make sure that this is right, or sue it. I mean, something is not working properly here, folks, I mean, that's, that, that's the bottom line.
Were the exhibits approved, and did the, did the city go out and look at everything as it was built and make sure that it's built the way it's supposed to be?
All that has to be signed up on, yeah.
It would have to be signed off on, it would have to be in the documents that we have at City Hall. I mean, I was not in office, Mr. Wells was not here.
Right, and we.
So, I mean, and, and again, we're not trying to play the blame game. But as far as I know, yes, everything, I mean, it had to be, like he said, the minimum requirements has to be signed off on, is passed by Planning and Zoning Board, which. Then that's, that's where an inspector comes into play.
Can that be, then they mentioned that there is a fee, I went in and had to sign the sunshine form, uh, it was, to request all that and the studies that were done. And she had mentioned that there is a fee. Will the city waive that fee for us because it benefits, I, even though I'm the one that requested it. Them blueprints and everything will help everyone really in the area that is there. Will the city waive that fee for us to get them? Well, it would be me, and then I'll give it, not to whoever, but I requested them yesterday.
Well, for starters, it'll take, there's, there's three days to, to, I mean, that's, three days to at least respond. We have to see how long it takes to actually get all that information, I mean, those are on large documents.
And it will take us longer than three days to put all that together.
Well, will they waive that fee, is what I'm asking.
Um, that would be something that would have to do with.
To be honest, the fee, I'm not too worried about. If you look at what she signed, it was ten cents a page.
Yeah, well, the, the lady, she said it could be, as, she said the, the research was seventeen dollars an hour.
What, what I would, what I would consider a compromise would be, we could save all those as a PDF. Put those on a flash drive.
That's fine.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't cost that much.
We're okay with that.
Available on the website.
Okay.
And I'm okay with, with us not charging the, the hourly rate, and I don't think the board would be opposed as far as what it costs to put that together. The PDF is, I've, I've got information, PDF, it actually is ready to be shared. We're gonna do one more question, because we're getting to eight.
I, I asked a question earlier, I never had an answer.
Okay.
So I asked earlier, on the FEMA, the information you turned in to FEMA, how many businesses were included? How many residential, and how many, I'm just curious.
Which is it?
Either flood, so that we can meet the eight million dollars among all the states. Because I know the fact that I have over four hundred thousand dollars on.
Okay, let me, I'll do a little bit of the explanation, the best, the best I can, guys, because I'm here to report the, I'm here to.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
So, this is what happens, is that, uh, what happened in both the instances happened is that a lot of times we went around and we do what they call drive-by inspections, okay? For the residents. What that is, that's a preliminary assessment that the state, basically, it starts with county level, okay? And basically what they're required to do is called a preliminary assessment, and I go around and we basically gauge things off, what's major and what's minor. And then you have what they call a public. A public, which they were talking about city infrastructure, which covers roadways, bridges, uh, dams, water control, utilities and stuff, okay? Are you, are you reading me right now? Okay, let's make sure. Now, on an individual assessment, now that affects the people that live in homes, okay? Also affects the people that have commercial businesses. So the last one, I will tell you off the top of my head, I don't have the numbers in front of me. And if you want them, I'll submit them to you what I submitted, okay? But I had, now, the, the, now you're talking about state here, but I'm not talking about federal. Then each one of them has different little assessment guidelines. Some of you people had Red Cross come out and they gauge it more as major damage versus minor damage on a SEMA level, okay? Make sense? So basically what I'm saying is that I think I had twenty-five residential's with minor, uh, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. Twenty-five residential's that had what they call minor damage. And when they talk about minor, means that you could receive three, four, five inches of water in your house. It affected, it been, it getting your electrical system. The electrical system, getting your electrical system, where you had to have the electrical people come in. That's what minor is, okay? Took your carpet out, took your first few layers of your sheetrock off. Um, made you, we had to have somebody come in and spray stuff to make sure you prevent mold and stuff like that. Now, what is happening next is when you talk about commercial structures, what, I'm sorry, backup. Residential structure, do you think is major where it is uninhabitable for six months? Okay? That is what they consider a major damage. Okay? In commercial, for example, your business, your annex business was listed as a major because it wasn't because it was flooded wise. It's because it sustained an, an amount of damage that's probably gonna make it where you either have to tear it down, elevate it, or move it. Okay? That's what they mean by major commercial. Now, commercial structures, I think we had on this last one, were two majors.
Two or one?
I think it, one or two majors. And I think.
We don't, on the second event, we won't count your event space again.
Okay.
Because you had it rebuilt.
Okay, see, the insurance company doesn't hook in it that way. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, it's, it's all guidelines that we have to go by.
Okay, so with the FEMA come and talk to me, I've had a major event.
This is what's wrong in our process with this, is that what? Right, what, what ends up happening is I submit the preliminary, the preliminary assessment thing, which I did that on last Friday, okay? Which was actually the next day after, I think. I got that into it as soon quick as possible on this last, on this last incident. And what they do is that, what they'll do is they'll compile, like the, the county, uh, the county, basically we compile all our numbers countywide. That doesn't exclude City Limits in Harrisonville, doesn't include Lakinette, Purimah, anywhere there was any water damage done. They compile all those numbers as preliminarys, like for minor, major type things. What ends up happening afterwards is that the state, then it goes to the state level. State level says, okay, you have to get, I think it's like eight million dollars for the damage. And basically what they do is that if it'd be state level, then the governor declares that it's a disaster area. And he forwards it on to the president, and that's where you get FEMA loan.
Okay, but unfortunately, you guys didn't have the right numbers, I mean, like, how do people report those numbers to you? Because I know for a fact, I work at Casco, our business got flooding in it, unfortunately, I'm also married to the mayor, so he came and helped suck up the water and we called the.
What's basically gonna happen is that.
How do you get that reported to you all?
What'll happen is that now that we've done our preliminary assessment, then what we do is we try to sit down. And which will probably try to get around to probably pretty much everybody, I've been contacting people that were affected. Because I know there were several places that we weren't aware that got affected, okay? Um, those areas of town that flooded that we did, we were not aware that flooded or, and we did our preliminary. So what they'll basically do is that number evaluation's a little different. It may cost you five thousand dollars to have your home repaired, and I'm sure it's probably costing you more than that. It's kind of an, an evaluat, a valuation type fee, and don't quote me on it, because I'm, like, again, I'm new at it, and I'm learning as we go. But the second evaluation fee is they, they determine on how many dollar amount of damage you had then. Okay, and then that's how they compile that number at the end.
Can we get on the website for everyone that had damage to please contact you so that you know what?
State rep would like to speak.
Yeah.
Uh, I do have Maureen, uh, Maureen Burke, who is dealing with SEMA. And I can give you her phone number right now, because my office has been in contact with her. And it's five, seven, three, six, four, five, six, six, four, six. And she's our regional director.
I'm sorry, what was her name again?
Maureen, uh, Maureen, M-A-U-R-E-E-N, Burke. And her number again is five, seven, three, uh, six, four, five, six, six, four, six. And she is your regional director.
Can you put out on Harrisonville website for anybody that's not here that was affected?
We can add, we have the contact list put here, we can add it to that, and we can put that out on the, on the website.
If I could add another two million to the six and the eight, then.
Hey, guys, that's the person I've been contacting, that I've been communicating with, get all my information on, I have this assessment.
Was the eight million business, the property together, or?
It's, it's everything.
Eight million statewide, correct.
So here's the issue that's going on right now, and I'll tell you, the issue that's going on right now. Cass County has submitted their totals to, as a preliminary so far, okay? And that's just going off the minors and the majors and stuff. Now, wherever else there was damage in a certain region, like I know Jackson County had a lot of flooding and stuff like that. And what the issue with that is, is what the holdup may be with that would be, uh, say, one of the cities had submitted the damage to you. So it's not something they can require the, the cities to be, to say. I think I'd want to participate in it, if we'd had the major damages like we did, or minor damages, whatever we want to look at on the level. So that's the whole issue, is that.
Is there a way for us to find out what, um, companies have not, you know?
Uh, that I don't know. That would be something you'd have to talk to Maureen about.
Okay.
Um, in that sense.
I have a question, so you said that there's people that you don't even know, that you didn't even know that were affected by the flood. Is there a way for us to get something out to all of the individuals, even just in Harrisonville? But, um, I mean, probably, there's probably people that don't even know about this meeting. I mean, it's people that didn't know about it. So they, they don't know that they need to report their number. Is there a news thing, is there a way of like getting ahold of four, five, nine, forty-one and have everybody run a story? Hey, you have money, we're trying to get a federal fund going, let's, everybody who has, please call us, let's get these numbers in. Because we need eight million dollars, so we can get our stuff in.
We can definitely add it to the website, we can put it in a, we can put it in.
But I mean, what about people who don't get on the website?
No, I don't, we, we can put it in the utility bills as well, and this man, this is a great idea, is we need to share the data.
I mean, we've got a whole list of stuff, guys. We've got a whole list of addresses that we already got from both instances, okay?
But if you don't know.
I, I, I understand that. Uh, and so what the whole deal is without, minus me coming out there, or the building inspector or something coming out there and making contact with somebody individually. It's, there are gonna be some people we're gonna miss, and, and I agree, we need to have some way of communicating with you to make sure that you understand.
Right.
That if you had, if you're having to report any damage, then maybe we need to go out and look at it.
If it's something that we need statewide, then that's what I'm thinking, the news could help us statewide, say, there is, if you have flooding, we've got to hit this eight million dollars. So if there's people out there that has, you know, two million dollars worth of stuff, with, there's twenty houses out there that we don't know about, we need those houses right here, so.
I agree, I agree with you.
Joan, right here, and then currently we'll wrap this up.
So my kind of thought is going to be what she was saying, we obviously have a huge communication issue with what's going on. I had to go into my school, I'm at the high school, and put out a word, not only about this meeting, but to kind of get people to speak up on what happened. And that's just my school, and even that didn't get around all the way. So not only do we need to do it in the community, but like the schools and stuff, they don't, I go to school with a bunch of guys as kids. And for all I know, there's people that I'm friends with that probably have four or four pairs of clothes right now, because they were affected. And I, you guys really can't do a, a whole bunch, because you, I mean, it's not.
But you, you have a good idea, I mean, kids, there are kids that go home to their parents, they could take a note of them or, or communicate, if that is a great idea.
Something is not just gonna work with just a website or a paper, because I, I don't read the paper, I don't read Harrisonville's website, but there's, there's something.
Well, the news is sitting down here, and I don't, I'm one that doesn't watch the news regularly, because.
There's that too.
So, yeah, you're, you're right, there's, it's a challenge.
Everybody follows all of these, uh, social spaces to find these things, so.
That, that is a good idea, because, yeah, the kids go home, and I mean, they do share with their parents. We ask our kids every day, what will happen at school today, that's a good idea. Um, ma'am, you had a question, then we're gonna wrap this up.
I have two real quick ones, when are we gonna do another stormwater engineer study? Because it seems like we really need to have one, with all the new stuff that has come in.
Whenever we get the funds to do it. What does one of those cost?
How many just funds?
I mean, I don't know without, I mean, do we know roughly what a? Well, I think we'll really get them a lot. Hydology analysis, and looking at hydology analysis, including all the, all the new development, how that affects. Run that information into the FEMA floodplain model, um, for all the tributary. I, I don't know, I, I don't, I can, I, I can give you a number now, because I'm just guessing, but we could, I mean, we could, I could work up something. Being a buddy, certainly, we could certainly do that.
Who puts that together, Brian?
Well, I can, I can scope it out, and then we hire consultants that specialize in riverine floodplain modeling to do the option.
Keep in mind, our engineering department is one person.
Sure.
So I do have a really quick question, so the stuff that's.
She had, she had a second one, I wanted to get her out, but she didn't pass that.
I just want to know, if FEMA releases funds, will us as homeowners see any of that for our personal damage?
Okay, so this is, uh. As far as, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'll answer the question the best I can, okay? So basically what I'm understanding about what FEMA grants work, and I don't know if, if a representative would know any more about it more than what I would. Is what I'm. is what I'm understanding, do you know about it?
Uh, my office did reach out, and I have to admit, I can remiss, a week ago, today, my mom passed, and, uh, so, you know, and she's been loved and missed. I, our office did reach out, and they reached out, and right now, we do not qualify for anything with FEMA. And, uh, and it's not saying that we get together as a neighborhood crew and you pull together all your people, because there's power in numbers. If you turn around and you organize your people, yes. Uh, but, when my, uh, legislative assistant reached out, um, but, and she said, and so that's the reason why I provided you with the number. And, and I'm sorry, I've not been more involved, I'm just trying to be, survive. I do think that in two thousand ten, we did have a study going on, and it was canceled.
No, we, we had new maps that were developed.
Okay.
How well FEMA's been evaluating the hydrology of the area, I don't know. That would be something that's, I think, that benefits, we'll find the answer to some of the questions.
And one of our issues, everyone keeps talking about the Loves, and, and, you know, I'm just being, because I've carried lots of legislation on political subdivisions. Uh, they were going to carry the note on the CID, and people would have voted with their feet, uh, and it would have been a sales tax on every bit of, uh, uh, and that would have included all of the sewage, water, and everything out north of town. So we'd missed, we did miss an opportunity there. But, you know, I'm very respectful of what our city did choose, uh, but those people that shopped at Loves would have paid for that, because they would have carried the note on that. So, you know, uh, before you start making really hard decisions and, uh, challenges and everything, you know, look at everything that is involved, uh, because, uh, before, two years ago, but when, when I was carrying language on CIDs, no one lived there. They couldn't be audited, well, guess what, now they can be. And, uh, whether, uh, and right now, they also have to file out, file their financials, just like every political subdivision. Uh, and that's been the law since nineteen sixty-five. And so, uh, I do try to serve my people, and, uh, because you're the most important partner. I taught in town here for forty years, and, uh, been, uh, very blessed to be here, and I'm listening to everything, I have my notes and, uh, all of that, and I will also reach out to FEMA tomorrow and DNR and see what I can do that, uh, and, right now, we don't have a whole lot of money at the state, and I have also carried issues with quality assurance report, dealing with early childhood development, and, uh, if you're like I am, I have two grandsons, one's three months and one's three, and there's nothing more important in my life for those kids to have the quality preschool that they need. And right now, there's no ability in the state of Missouri to, uh, evaluate those programs, and we've lost upwards of seventy million dollars. I have the legislation in place, that was done last year, but tomorrow I'm going up to Kaufman to privately fundraise, uh, meeting with Desi and all of those things. So I'm very tenacious about things that I do, uh, and I am honored to hear what you have to say tonight, and I'm in the phone book, and there's times that I can meet with you, but I, uh, I support the city, uh, because I need to keep my nose out of everything, because I, uh, and that's why you don't see me very much, and so I'm just listening tonight, but I'm open to any questions that you might have.
As far as the, the formal part of this meeting, uh, we need to kind of wrap it up, we've gone well over the, the time we had allotted. I know people still have questions, I know some of your questions did not get answered, people up here taking lots of notes, we're going to try to address these. We do have a lot of, uh, things that we need to address, you know, there's obviously some weaknesses in the city, we've all identified that. The biggest challenge we're going to face in any of this, and it's the city, you all with your damages, it all comes down to money. I mean, it's all going to be, you know, where is the money going to come from for everything, and.
So that, on the list of the things that you have left to fix, you keep referring back to that list.
That master plan.
The master plan.
Correct.
How much money is sitting on that master plan?
How much is sitting aside for it?
Yeah, well, I mean, you keep referring to, well, we just have, we don't have, we don't have the funds for it yet. So how much funds need to be raised to get everything, because any, everything, anything that's on that list, obviously, has prior, I mean, there's a reason why it's on that list. It needs to be fixed or repaired. So, all, everything that's on that list, how much is the total on that list?
About three million dollars.
Three million dollars. And that's to correct everything within the city that's on that list.
That'd be to complete the master plan that we have currently.
Current, that's the thing that we talked about that would need to be added.
You could add more to it, and this, of course, going to.
Correct.
It's going to identify things that maybe US citizens in the city needs to work, uh, look to, forward to, to making the change.
Correct.
And, uh, okay.
Really wrapping this up.
Last thing.
Okay, last thing.
So, you know, we clearly know that a master plan will give us an idea where we need to go from here. And then everybody in this room, basically, just, they would pay a special tax or an extra tax, I mean, would that money give us the funds to get these projects started?
Well, it would take voters to get out to vote, the problem with Harrisonville is you have ten thousand people and seven hundred people show up to vote. Until people start showing up to vote, we could talk until we're willing to take.
Yeah, tax, taxes, the tax force has to go to the voters, it's, that's hanging on.
So we need a community in this room, and we really need to spread the word and get people involved, because we want to be in this community, and we need to be involved to be a part of it, you know?
Can you call a special?
That takes us into advocate as well, but we can't, but you guys can.
Do the tax, I mean.
It depends on where, is it, tax law is very narrow on what cities, and it's on.
Right.
There's no way in the world I can tell you all, because I don't know them. But it's something we need to check into, maybe there's something there available, maybe there's not, so.
I can tell you this, in nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand, the city of Independence, Missouri, during a similar storm, a group of real concerned citizens like this got together. They started a grassroots movement to raise money, to raise a stormwater sales tax in the city of Independence. In two thousand, it was passed, quarter cent sales tax for stormwater only. Those same people that was on that grassroots was commissioned by the city council to be on the, on the oversight committee, that met quarterly with stormwater sales tax people, engineers, staff, to see that that money was spent properly, and, and on only stormwater related issues. In fifteen years, they have done over a hundred stormwater related projects in Independence. In two thousand, they had a forum that had between three and four hundred calls of anything from stormwater to sewage backups. July of twenty-seven, last month, they had six calls. It will work, and it takes the effort and the money.
I'm all for, you know, if we have to be, you have to be an advocate for yourself, if you're a voice, and I'm going to get it, you know, and that's.
And that's true with taxes, I mean, that's what it comes down to with the tax, I mean, it's not something, all we can do is put it on the ballot and let people vote on it. I mean, we can't, we can't say it doesn't have a vote on. Um, I want to thank everybody for coming, like I said, I know we did not get everything answered tonight that you wanted answered. We will try to get more answers, we do have things, like I said, that we need to improve on, we definitely have a lot of work ahead of us that we will be working on. You can look here, I'm sure you are looking at this seriously, I know there's, there's feelings that your, your things are not being looked at, they are being looked at. One thing I have learned, before I got into city, being in the city business, I thought things move very slowly, and as I learned as I got in there, a lot of things do move very slowly, there's a process to it, and we try to move through as quickly as we can. But there's a lot of, a lot of red tape sometimes comes up, so we will try to move things as quickly as we can, but do understand that they don't move at, at light speed at government level, I can assure you that. So, um, I don't know how long anybody wants to stick around, since we run a little bit late.
Can you make sure everybody signs our list?
Yeah.
An address, a number to reach you, that way we can cross check, make sure you are on the list that we, how this we have.
Here are the, here are the sheets, they're laying up here, these are the contact numbers, it has city contact numbers, it has, like I said, the local agencies. I would, would encourage everyone to pick this up. Anyway, thank you for coming.